All right, all right, everybody ready?
I'm standing.
Ready, all right.
Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the Federal Way City Council Meeting for November 21st, 2023. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everybody. Got a very busy agenda this evening, so we're going to be very efficient going through this. The first we have is a public safety report from Chief Wong. Chief? Oh, and Chief, before you get started, as you get set up there, Councilmember Seifedosin is on her way, and she'll be online here in about, I think by 7:00, 7:00 PM. So she's excused for the first 30 minutes of the meeting.
Or it could be a little longer.
Could be a little bit longer, right, exactly.
All right, good evening, Mayor Farrell, Council President Kochmar, Deputy Mayor Honda, council members. This evening, I will provide a public safety report to include Washington and Federal Way crime statistics. In addition, I'll share with you the latest crime trends, what is causing certain crimes to increase, and what are our next steps as Federal Way to make our city safer. First, I'll talk about the crime trends and crime stats and the policy decisions, the impacts that has on municipalities. And then I'll talk about the 2023 crime stats, January through October. These are the latest numbers. We'll compare it to the previous year. We'll briefly talk about department staffing, where we are today, and then some community policing initiatives that makes Federal Way unique, and then next steps as a city. This chart that you're looking at are murder numbers per year, and this is 42-year stats since Washington State has been keeping crime statistics. And if you look at 2022, last year, the murder numbers in Washington was 394. This is the highest recorded number of murders in the state of Washington. If you look at 2019, 201. In just span of three years, our murder rate in Washington State has doubled. And the South King County, King County area, we had 124 murders in 2022. So we count for significant number of the homicides here in state of Washington. And one of the key things that are occurring, why did this number jump up so high? One is we're in a drug crisis. Fentanyl is very potent. It's 50 times more potent than heroin. People that get hooked on fentanyl, they can't get off of it. I've never seen drug as potent as it is now. We have children that are dying. We have people that are dying in our community regular basis. It's happening everywhere at this point. So drug epidemic is one. Two, the 2021 police reform laws have a direct impact, and I will talk about that in the later slides. And if you look at 1992, 93, 94, our murder rate was the 297 murders in the state of Washington. And that's during the another drug epidemic that we were facing, crack cocaine. So that's, that was the peak. And then you can see the downward trend. As a nation, we got really tough on crime at that time. And then you see the peak here. So this is a very unusual occurrence. We're seeing a lot of violence in King County, a level of violence that we have never seen before in King County. At the same time, when you look at this chart, total officer rate per thousand in population. If you look at, this is 42-year stats, if you look at 1980, there were 1.74 officers per thousand residents. If you look at 2022, we're down to 1.36 officers per thousand residents. And lot of the officers back starting 2019, 2021, particularly, you can see this steep drop-off. The reform laws really had an impact, particularly with veteran officers. A lot of them opted to, to retire because they didn't think that we were heading in the right direction. And as a law enforcement community, we've been stating that these reform laws are going to have an impact on public safety. Now, two and a half years into it, I can tell you what's going on. We have a better picture of what's going on. First two bullets, we talked about that. We're at all-time high record in terms of homicide, 394. I don't know where we're going to finish in 2023, but it's going to be somewhere in that arena. It hasn't dropped off, at least in this region, King County, the numbers have not dropped off. King County, 124 murders, it's probably the highest murder numbers we've seen. And I don't know what it's going to be this year. Hopefully, it'll be a little less than that. 2022 statewide, we saw violent crime increase 8.9%. Robberies increased 18%. Aggravated assaults increased 12% statewide. Officer assault, 2,375 last year, up 20%. There's probably never been a time that's been more dangerous to be a police officer than to be a police officer in this region at this time. We're seeing a lot of violence. People say that crime is up nationwide. That's not true. Crime and murder rates are down nationwide, not here in Washington. 2022 FBI report states that murder rate is down 6.1% nationwide in 2022. Washington, at the same period, we're up 16.6%. Significant number of the murders occurring here in King County. Auto thefts are through the roof. 2022, there are 47,000, more than 47,000 auto thefts, up 34% from the year before. Typically, in Washington, we experience 25,000 to 26,000 auto theft in a year. That's still high. Per capita, we were one of the highest states in the nation in terms of auto theft. We are the highest per capita. We are number four nationwide, following New York, Texas, California, then Washington. The difference between those states and Washington, they're like seven or eight times larger in population than us. Our auto theft numbers are unbelievable, and it's impacting a lot of people every single day, people who can least afford to have their car stolen. So auto theft number increased, almost doubled after the no-pursue law went into effect. Vehicles fleeing from Federal Way PD officers. 2020, we had 10. 2021, 72 officers. When officers turned on their lights and sirens, people just kept driving away or looting the officer. And by law, we can't chase them. Now, the law went into effect July 21st, July 25th, 2021. So you start seeing the number increase. 2022, 431 cars eluded from our officers. I wouldn't say elude because we're not chasing. They just failed to yield. As of October 31st, we've had 360 vehicles not stop for us. And these numbers are actually low numbers. Unless the officer documents the fact that the vehicle failed to yield, it's not recorded. I can tell you that these are low, low estimates. This is what we actually documented. I talked about drug crisis. We have people dying in our community just about every day. Through Nov- through November 1, we had 1,088 people die from drug overdose, 1,001 all of 2022. So we still have two months to go, and it's going up. So I don't know when we're going to reach peak, but when the drug overdose, the drug usage goes down, our communities will be safer. Because people are not in their right state of mind. They're doing erratic stuff that's causing people to not feel safe in our region. Essentially, decriminalizing all drug possession and usage for two years has contributed to the increase in crime and overdose. They, after the Blake decision, they created a temporary law that said, you got to give two warnings, and you can make an arrest on the third one. They made it practically impossible to enforce it because there's no way to track it. Then they made it impossible for the courts to really provide any sentencing. So there's no way of getting people off the street into the system to get treatment. I think we're in a little better place now because we can actually make arrests, take them to jail, force them into some treatment. Hopefully, over time, when all the communities do this, over time, our society will get safer. But people aren't voluntarily going into treatment when they're on fentanyl. What is causing the increase in crime? Restriction on law enforcement. The 2021 police reform laws resulted in emboldened criminals. At the time, they said, nope, no pursue law's going to make our streets safer. Two and a half years later, I can tell you, it's not safer. We have, just yesterday, we had juveniles hanging out the window, taunting one of our officers to chase them. And when they turn on the lights, they were just, they're having fun because they know there are no consequences, and they know we can't chase them. This is happening daily. There's lawlessness. Should not be happening. Drug epidemic, I talked about decriminalizing the possession and the use of hard drugs. That has had a huge impact, and it's compounded the problem. The organized crime, knowing we're soft on drugs here, has flooded our market. These pills that used to cost $40, $50 a pill are $2 on the street. We have homeless, unhoused people, they're, they're drug dealing. That's how cheap it's gotten. We have kids overdosing on this stuff because it just saturated our society. It's all about making money, and it's driving much of the violent shootings in our region. Drug dealing gone bad. Up surge in auto theft and other crimes is a direct result of prohibiting police vehicular pursuits. Stealing a vehicle is a precursor for committing other crimes. It's Criminal Basics 101. Now, you're very rarely finding a crime that doesn't involve a stolen vehicle. They're all stealing a stolen vehicle because it gives them anonymity. It gives them less chance of being detected and being apprehended. And they know we can't chase them. They're experiencing it. They run from the police, and they go, hey, it works. They won't chase us. But now, we have organized retail crimes in stolen cars, smash-and-grab burglaries. Burglary numbers aren't necessarily up, but what they're doing now is they're just ramming the business with the car. If you're a criminal, why wouldn't you? That's the quickest way to enter a business. Get what you want, get out of there before the police show up. And even if the police show up, guess what? We can't chase you anyways. It's just basics. You know, they're, from their mindset, hey, they don't care they cost $30,000, $50,000 damage. They want to be in and out, and the quickest way is to smash the front door, windshield, windows with the car. Robberies, robberies, I can't think of a robbery that we've had that didn't involve a stolen car. They're all stealing cars. Purse snatching, carjacking, shootings. It's happening everywhere. It's not just Federal Way. If you follow the news at all, you know it's happening everywhere. Law enforcement staffing shortage. We've lost another 600 officers last year. There's 1,666 officers statewide. We're ranked 51st because we're including District of Columbia. Math is, if you spend $170 million, if the state spent $170 million, we would tie 51st place for a number of officers per population. We would have to spend $900 million just to get to the 25th place. We are desperately short of officers. Less officers, more crime because they feel like they're emboldened. They feel like they can get away with it. State Department of Corrections has reduced their average daily population by 30% in the last five years in closed facilities while our state population has increased. About a third of jail population, 2018, there were more than 18,000 inmates in our state prison. Now, last year, 12,000, sub-number. Where all these inmates go? In our communities. Unbalanced approach, reducing ADP at King County Juvenile Detention Center. I'm highlighting juvenile particularly because they significantly reduce juvenile population. And unfortunately, a lot of our violence, a lot of our violence is being committed by juveniles, and I'll share a couple examples of that. It's happening at the adult jails, too. The, the goal is to reduce average daily population. In fact, they want to get to zero incarceration for juveniles. Failed state mental health system. We're seeing people of mental illness, mental health crisis. We suspect many of them because of the drug usage. They're on our streets. They're not, sometimes they're not stable. Sometimes officers, as involuntary, I'm going to take this person to the ER because that's where we take them. You know what? They're right back on our streets generally. So just, I'll talk quickly about this legislative engine. One thing, for terms of public safety, restoring standard for police vehicular pursuits. Prior to the legislative action in 2021, many cities had restrictive pursuit policies that weighed community safety with the reason for the pursuit. We had a very restrictive police pursuit policy in Federal Way. We're in an urban, urban environment. We didn't particularly want pursuits during daytime. In terms of priority of life, we want to protect innocent people. So we didn't engage in too many pursuits during the day unless it was a violent crime. But the criminals didn't know that. But as a police chief, I did allow it middle of the night, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. If somebody committed a burglary, smashed a business, or committed a crime, or D, what we did, stolen cars, we did allow it late night, early morning hours because there's very little traffic. And when we arrested these criminals, they had guns, masks in the car. That's the best time to catch them in stolen cars. Not after they commit because when they're committing the crime, the chances of officer being there, encountering them, the probability are very low. But in a stolen car, we caught them. And they wouldn't steal a car because they didn't want to get detected and get arrested. Now they know they can't be arrested for stolen cars. We can't pursue for any property crime at all, period. It doesn't matter if a city loses $200,000 in equipment. We got to let them go because we got to follow the law. Right now, the balance favors the criminal, not the victims. People are losing cars every day, and only one entity in our government that can intervene with criminals, and that's the police. And our lawmakers have told us, don't intervene because this is what makes our community safer. And I'm telling you, as a police professional, our communities are not safer. The legislators is responsible for monitoring the unattended consequences resulting from set of adopted reforms and make course corrections when necessary. And they've done that. They said, hey, we don't want the police to contact anyone unless you have probable cause to arrest. Eight months later, they reversed that law because they realized that was a mistake. I'm telling you, if there's ever a course correction, they need to correct this. They got to deliver the much-needed message to criminals that you can't just steal a car or just be in a car, and you're exempt. You can do a shoplift, get in a car, and the officer's just going to let you go 24 hours a day. That's not a good message. The ask is the pursuit law to be refined to allow the pursuit of stolen vehicles, allowing local jurisdictions to allow pursuits if that is in the best interest of their community. And I'm telling you, for Federal Way, middle of the night, you smash into a business or steal $200,000 of equipment, yeah, we're going to chase you. We're going to take you to jail. That's the best interest of Federal Way. The lack of action to change the law will continue to encourage criminal behavior. I've been told that, don't waste my breath, that they're not going to change the law. I'm going to speak for the residents of Federal Way, whether the law changes or not. Next thing, the public, general public doesn't know, juvenile access to attorney. Last, a couple of years ago, they, part of the reform law, we cannot interview juveniles if they're involved in a crime, period. We have to allow them access to an attorney, and the public defender always tells them, don't talk to the police. You could have threats to shoot up a school or what have you, for investigating that, even if the parent says, young man, talk to the police. Tell them what's going on. You can search my son's backpack. We can't do it. The attorney can override that. The ask is to allow parents or guardians to provide consent for juveniles to be interviewed by law enforcement, to consent property search, or let the juvenile talk to the police after consulting. Let the juvenile decide. Right now, that's not the case. It is hindering our ability to do our job. It is making our community less safe. And we're just going to have to make an arrest on a juvenile based on the evidence that we have. The juvenile doesn't get any say-so. That's the current law. That should be changed. Okay, so I've been asked to really do this presentation in 10 minutes, but I feel like I really needed to cover that. Now, I'm going to go quickly over these NiBRA stats. For 10 months, 2023, we have 77, 7,718 crimes. Right now, we're going to be probably 6% projecting 5% to 7% over last year, total NiBRA numbers. Our overall crime is up 6% 2022, 7,313. 2023, 7718. Now, I'll go quick since you know the format now. Murder's up 25%. We had eight in 2022. We have 10 murders up to this year. We had two double homicides that really drove up our numbers, but I'm really proud of our detectives. We have 80% solve rate. Eight out of 10 homicides we've solved. We're this close from solving the ninth one. We may go to the public for help in solving this particular crime, but we are that close. We just need a little bit more evidence. Manslaughter, 2022, we had one. This year, zero. Forceful rate, down 6%, 78 to 73. Robbery, up 54%, 126 to 194. We absolutely got killed in October. We had more than 40 robberies, and they're not all like gun robberies, but strong-arm robberies without a weapon involved, forcibly taking something. We got killed, but our agency, I believe, responded really well. And I'd like to share a few of those with you. But we're way up there. Aggravated assault, up 6%, 272 to 288. Simple assault, down 2%. Burglary commercial, down 5%, 366, 347. Residential burglary, down 21%. This is, I'm going to show you a slide on this one in a minute. But just last year, 201, 158. These are some of the lowest residential burglary numbers we've seen in the history of our city, and I'll share that with you. Motor vehicle theft up 74%. So some of our success story. October 18th, this is all in October. We had to respond as an agency. We prioritized things. We had a 57-year-old transient male robbed five businesses, convenience stores, in a very short span of time, five or six days. It was, his violence was escalating. He was ordering the clerks to turn around and get on their knees, really just to scare the heck out of them. So we knew he was going to end up hurting or killing someone. Detective Howell worked on this case. There's a lot of internal communication that occurred. And as a result of that, Commander Jones was going to dinner with his family, spotted the suspect vehicle at a local motel. We brought in the, the team, and he was taken into custody. So that was, he was responsible for at least five armed robberies in a span of week in October. October 19th, we started experiencing purse snatchings. We had two juveniles, 13-year-old female, 14-year-old male, committed strong-arm robberies at Fred Meyer, and a short time later, Winko, where older, vulnerable citizens were injured. They were assaulted. I believe one was 86, the other was 72. These kids have just completely lost their moral compass. This case actually angered us internally. We put all our resources into this as well. We asked public assistance on the first one. We asked for public assistance on this other case. And on October 28th, we got a break. A gas station clerk called 911 and said, I think I have the suspects in the purse snatching at my gas station. And that was the Brown Bear 340th and Dash, Dash Point. We responded. They stolen vehicle. They looted from us. They crashed, took the driver immediately into custody, patrol did. Second suspect ran. He was arrested short distance away from there. So that was our break. And then, so we, we solved that case. So it's, it's been much quieter in terms of purse snatching, but they were hitting Federal Way. They were hitting Auburn, Tacoma. They were pretty, pretty active. And then October 25th, a 26-year-old man was shot and killed at the O'Reilly Auto Park parking lot in attempted carjacking. Following day, the people of interest, 18- and 19-year-old males were taken into custody for freeing of violent crimes that they were involved in regionally, including carjackings, attempted home invasion, home invasion type of crimes, very violent. They were already on our radar because this group was committing numerous carjackings in Kent, some in Federal Way, home invasions. So the detectives were already on to them. They had conducted, Federal Way and Kent detectives, pro act teams, they were conducting surveillance operations on these suspects to begin with. And then we decided to make arrests based on Kent charges. So they're arrested by SWAT operation. They were taken into custody. Our detectives continued their investigation, and murder charges were filed. If you follow the news, it was news coverage yesterday and today about these individuals and the violent crimes they had committed. Unfortunately, we lost a life, but we have to look in terms of how many lives have we saved by taking these people into custody. They had no qualms about shooting people. So I'm really proud of our, how we responded as an agency. I can tell you that beginning of, you know, after first week in November, now it's gotten much quieter. And the quickest way to prevent violence is take these offenders into custody. And that's, that's what happened here in Federal Way. Okay, so here's our murder numbers going back to 2015. This year, we're at 10 murders for the year. Here's, there's 2023 isn't available NiBRA numbers by WASPIC, but here's 2022 murder numbers, and these are jurisdictions that are around us or jurisdictions that have similar population base. Tacoma is twice our size. Tacoma had 43 murders in 2022, and they'll finish less this year. Auburn had 13, Kent nine, Federal Way eight, Renton had seven. Here's the auto theft numbers. These nine, 1,976. That's just 10-months data. We're not even done with this year. It's absolutely just taking off. And unfortunately, it's the teenager. It's the juveniles. Because they know in King County, realistically, they're not going to see any jail time for an auto theft. Adults don't even see jail time for auto theft. So they know that. Even if they get caught, they know that they're not going to stay in any cell for any length of time at all. Commercial burglary, you can see the upward trend, but we're going to see a reduction this year. So that's good. It's just the method in which they're doing it. It's just smash a vehicle into a building. Here's our residential burglary. It's 629. I remember back then, it was so high, it was actually very alarming for our community. Just over the years, we've seen a reduction, and we'll probably finish, you know, a lower number than last year. So that's, that's really a good sign. And why the trend changes, you know, people are really hard in their home a lot more. Video surveillance, people are home more. So the crooks have just changed. They're doing something else. Right now, stealing a car is paying off. And then, or flash mob, steal a car, go into a convenience store, somebody's got a gun, they just grab as much as they can, and they all run out. So those are the kind of, the trends have changed. I just want to share with you, in terms of traffic collisions, things are okay. It hasn't increased in terms of numbers. Here's our fatality accident investigated. We had five so far through October. Injury accidents, 424. Might finish a little higher than last year. Non-injury accidents investigated, and then total accidents, 1,175. It'll be very similar to last year, maybe a little tad bit less. Nothing unusual DUI accidents, hit and run, just typical average numbers that we see year after year. Wanted to share that with you. And then quickly, just department staffing, authorized police officers and transport officers. We're currently at 150. We have two vacancy civilian position, two. When I tell you two, I don't want you to think they're all deployed. They're not. They still, many of them still need to go to the academy, but we've done the heavy lifting. Our administration team has done an outstanding job. We brought people in. This, these numbers include people we've given conditional job offers to. Now, it's just timing of bringing them to go to the academy. We can't bring them all at once. There's some professional testing left, some background left, but we've done the heavy lifting. In 2024, we're going to probably have 25, 30 people graduate from the police academy. So now, we're going to see the deployments coming in the field trip. But the day that you see them here, they're still out six months. The day we hire them, they're at least a year out before they graduate from the academy. It's a slow process. We've lost a lot of officers. I explained to you why now we're rebuilding. The key thing is to train them, hire the right people. And I could have had this to zero months ago, but we wanted, the team, what I told my team is hire the right people, hire the people of character. I'd rather go with vacancy than to bring people, and then we're going to have problems. So we're trying to hire quality people. Hundred, at 150 officers, our ratio is 1.49 per thousand population. And I shared with you the number of officers, our state population, 1.36 per thousand. And then council, mayor council authorized 13 additional officers for the 2324 budget, and we are close to filling it all up. Here's historical sworn staffing, 2026, we had 118. November 2006, Proposition 1, Public and Community Safety Service Improvement Package, we added 18 officers, bringing us to 137. Then the Great Recession came. We started reducing officer numbers. We got down to 122, the bare bones. We got down to one twenty-two, the bare bones. And then two thousand and fourteen, we steadily increased our number of officers to one thirty-seven. And then council authorized thirteen more, bringing us to one fifty. Something you should be very proud of, and the community should be aware of. Federal Way Police Department is nationally and state accredited. We're one of three agencies in the state of Washington that is both nationally and state accredited. There are about two hundred and fifty law enforcement officers. Only eight are nationally accredited. About fifty agencies are state accredited. We're one of three in the state of Washington. That represents the highest standard of best practices in law enforcement. What accreditation means, it just elevates professionalism of policing. And to attain both accreditation is not easy. It takes the entire organization to do it. But we have people coming to our agency because they know we're nationally accredited and we're state accredited, that they know that our standards are high. The training is high. When community analyst person left our agency, we reorganized. We created, reclassified that position to community engagement coordinator. So if you follow our social media, you'll know that there's a lot more postings. Digital engagement has been increased significantly. We're not doing anything different in the police department. We're just simply telling people more of what we're doing. Mobile surveillance trailers, we have two now. We're seeking council, no, we have, we have two now. We obtain approval to get two more, maybe two more in the future. But there's a high demand for these surveillance cameras. They tie into our Safe City Camera, and there's a high demand for businesses. So we have them deployed now, and this is what they look like. And I'm going to go quick, because I was told to do this in ten minutes. I, it's, I probably covered about eight minutes, right? I've got two minutes left. Automated license plate readers, we have four vehicles that read automatic license plate readers, and that, they deter crime because they find stolen vehicles, let's say, at a business parking lot. And when we find them, they flee. So we don't know what crime they were going to commit. But it happens daily. But these, they read thousands of license plates per day. It alerts the officer there is a stolen vehicle or a wanted subject. And then one of the things we're really proud of, I know the mayor's proud of this because we talk about it every week at management team, but you'd be hard-pressed to find graffiti in Federal Way. If you find graffiti, just get on Eyes on Federal Way, email any one of us. But we have a graffiti technician from Community Development, and he does a phenomenal job. They're just, you're, you're going to have a hard time. We're proud of that. You can drive through our town, you won't see much. Illegal encampment initiative, we've done this for a number of years. We don't allow illegal encampments in Federal Way. If you see a tent, let us know. Our challenge is pack highway. You know, it's, it's a free society. People can come in and go, robust, public transportation. So people come in, you're going to see, you know, undesirable activity and so forth, but we're not going to sit idle. We address it. We try to, we aim for illegal encampments, period, in Federal Way. And that reduces crime. We've done emphasis operations since August sixteenth, when the new drug, drug law went into effect. We've made twenty-eight arrests and referrals so far. We've done three sting operations. We've issued thirty-four shopping cart infraction issues. When people take shopping carts, they don't blink to them. We've been issuing tickets, and it's working. There's a lot less people pushing shopping carts today. They're pulling wagons and things, but they're not pushing shopping carts as, as much. And our officers are issuing infractions, and it's working. Okay, last slide. What's next? Respond to call for police service and prosecute matters to the fullest extent possible. We're going to be proactive, and I gave you some examples. We're not going to tolerate crime. We'll put our resources, solve it. Pass safety-centric laws to protect the community, provide tools, provide justice for victims. The balance is way off right now. Hopefully, my message is loud and clear. We have too many victims in this community. Support additional funding sources to, for adequate staffing for police at the state level for safer communities. We need to increase funding source at the state level to add police to our state. There's just not enough police officers. We need to have consequences for criminal behavior. Seriously lacking in the state, in our county. Strategically assess and adjust our policing model to maximize public safety, addressing quality of life crimes. We will enforce the drug law. We will enforce vandalism. We will enforce minor crimes or lower crimes that has direct correlation to community safety and violent crimes. You've got to take care of the little things before you can tackle just the big stuff. You don't want to just tackle the big stuff. As law enforcement officer, we've sworn oath, uphold the Constitution, enforce the rule of law. We will continue to advocate for victims of crime. We have brave men and women that are willing to do the job, risk their safety, and, and sometimes their life to protect our community. We need some help from our lawmakers to balance things out. As others seek to change our procedure in policing, we need to thoughtfully ensure that the proposed solutions are not worsening the problem. We must get the balance right and support changes that advance public safety, not criminal conduct. This coming year legislative session, you're going to see new bills that say to legalize jaywalking, to prevent police officers stopping for any non-moving traffic violation, expired tabs, any violation. It's going to worsen the problem. We need to go the other way. Okay, and I'm open for questions. I think that was ten minutes.
Council, any questions? Now, we've got, I, I know that, Chief, we very much appreciate all the work that you and your department do. Thank you very much. And thank you for the constant updates and great work by you and your department in, in capturing those individuals as quickly as you did and getting the word out to our citizens to know. Because I know many people in our community were very concerned about their ability to go to a grocery store, to, to go out into the community. So that very quick decisive action is, is critically important. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Okay.
I just wanted to say thank you to the chief and to this, our police department for all the work that they do.
Amen to that.
And I want to say thank you for, you're the one who ran after one of those purse snatching suspects and captured them. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you for giving me the credit. My wife was quite impressed. She didn't think I could run that fast.
Very good. All right, thank you very much. All right, now we're on to the next part of the agenda, recent events. Mayor's emerging issues and report. Okay, so this is my emerging issues and report. As you could see on the picture to the far left, the Boys and Girls Club, first on Eighth Avenue. We, and then also, we went over to the, the picture right there on the left was when we went over to the Ron Sen with EX Three Teen Center, right there at Truman High School. And we got a great picture taken with the, the emphasis was on pedestrian safety. And it was great to see the young people there at both locations. Thank you to the council members and for the individuals that were involved in painting. These are the actual plows that are going to be involved in snow removal. And our teams in public works and parks have been training and preparing for, you know, these eventual snow or, or cold weather. And they've been preparing to make sure that our roads are safe. Then to the right, we had the Interurban War Memorial Trail Ribbon Cutting on November tenth. We had quite a number of elected officials. This was spearheaded by Lee Engier, the mayor of Pacific, and, and our, the state treasurer, Mike Policiati, our former state representative here, along with our King County Councilman, Pete Von Reichberg was there, our congressman, Adam Smith, all, quite a number of elected officials recognizing, you know, all of the wars in the twentieth century. And it was really a great event. Quite a number of people there. And the city of Federal Way actually bought a brick, and I brought one, bought one for my family as well. And so that's something, if you're, if you're down there in the Pacific area, the city of Pacific, I would encourage you to go take a, you know, take a walk and see those memorials. On November tenth, the Knutson Family Theater had a movie, The D.C. League of Super Pets. So that was a great event for the family. Then we had, the picture to the left was right there on the, on the east entry to the new memorial field. It was great to see Judge Larson there. Judge Larson actually played, I think, on the inaugural game that was played on that field, at Memorial Field. And he was showing me where all the things were. And actually, Councilmember Rodobi, you were...
I was a year ahead of him. I actually played in that game.
Very good, very good. So it is, you know, and my son had actually played on two of the games before, before this in the brand-new stadium. So really, the, the torch has been passed, Councilmember, to the, the next generation. And, and it, it was really a great to see so many council members and the architects and the, all the people involved in the creation of this. And this is going to be there. It's a beautiful facility that, just think of the countless, you know, thousands of people and families and, and people from out of state. One of my former teammates at the University of Washington came down from Woodinville, and he was one of the opposing coaches. And so people from all over the Puget Sound are going to come here and, and experience our beautiful new stadium. So it was, it was great. Then, actually, at the conclusion of the last meeting, our council president, at the very end of the meeting, said, "Is it possible for us to get some money to the, to the multi-service center food bank?" And I immediately replied, "Yes, we can, and we will." And then our deputy mayor then suggested, "Don't forget the senior center over east of the freeway as well." And I want to let you know, we took it to heart. I have, I have, as mayor, authorization up to twenty thousand dollars for an expenditure. Thank you, Steve Groom, for freeing up that money as he promised just extemporaneously when we were here at our last meeting. And so the middle picture is me providing the nineteen thousand five hundred dollar check to the multi-service center on behalf of the council and the city of Federal Way. The multi-service center food bank just does a phenomenal job in our community, helping individuals. And then the picture on the right, actually, Councilmember Walsh, we just happened to run into Councilmember Walsh when he was actually helping folks at the food bank at the senior center, right there about three fifty-second, just west of Military Road. And the line of cars was literally not only wrapped the entire length of the parking lot and the driveway, it got out onto the street. And, and it had been that way for quite some time. And Shelley Perea, the executive director over there, was very thankful. And, and not only was the parking lot full and the food bank filled, but then we went inside to, you know, to give the check. Bill was with me, along with David as well, David Solano and Bill Vedino, who work for all of us at the, at the city. They, there's a crowd there, and they're having their lunch there at the senior center, which is a great old log cabin there. It's really one of these great facilities in our, in our community and in the greater Federal Way area. And a, they sang a very heartfelt "God Bless America." And if you wanted to see that, actually, David got it on tape, and it's on my Facebook page. It really was, it was really touching. So, yeah, I think they really, really, really appreciated the thought. So on behalf of, you know, thank you, council, for your suggestions. We took it to heart, we delivered it, so thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, that, now, upcoming issues. We've got the tree lighting. That's the, that's a picture of a former tree that we've done. We no longer, at one point, we were, you know, we had built the, we had put the tree there. In fact, actually, me and my son Ben were there when they planted that tree back in December of two thousand and fifteen. And it's growing beautifully. The problem is, in previous years, we were wrapping about ten thousand lights on that tree. We were loving it to death. And now what we're doing, and, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, that we take a metal shell and, and, and what would you call that, like a...
A pretty cage.
There we go. And we, we put the lights around that to, so as not to damage our tree because we want our tree to get nice and big and strong and tall. And, and we're not wrapping the tree itself. And anyway, we're doing that again. That'll be on, that'll be on Saturday, December second, at four P.M. Free cocoa and cookies and got a lot of, it's, as you could see, it's really, we'll have musical acts, a lot of kids there singing and, and musical groups for the, the community. And really hope you can make it. And we're all set to go with the lighting of the tree. The first time we ever lit the tree, the very first time we did it, do you remember that? I went to go, or I had Ben, I had Ben pull the thing, and, and the lights didn't come on. Exactly. It was like, ah, what's going on? And so we finally got it to work about thirty seconds later. It felt like an eternity. And so the next year, we were going to be, we, we were going to make sure that didn't happen. So we went with, what do you, what was some, what do you call it?
We went with a web-based system.
What he said. And what we didn't realize was that all these other people that were there using that as well. So here, we thought we were fail-safe, and I go, "Light the tree," and nothing happened again. And so anyway, the past couple of years, we've had great luck. But it's a beautiful tree. And even if you miss that event, you could see it from a distance. And even if you miss the event, drive over there at any time, and it's just beautiful. EJ and his crew have put up all the snowflake lights all around town. They have, they've also done the park. But it's a great place just to drive through, like, like some of those candy cane lane places that we, that we see around our community. So anyway, starting on December second, it's going to be lit up. It's beautiful. You could see it literally from across the street at the mall. Okay, we've got upcoming events. We've got the free movie holiday at the pack, Jack Frost, on Saturday, November twenty-fifth. That's this, this Saturday at ten A.M. Jingle Bell Brunch, one of my favorites, at the Federal Way Community Center on December second at ten A.M., the same day as we do the tree lighting. And I believe that is, is that the, I believe that's my report. Okay, now, now the most important part of the evening, which is public comment. Oh, before I move on, per council rule, everybody, please remember that we do not have a second meeting in December. We normally, by, by custom, we only had the, the first meeting of the month. But now by council rule, we don't have that second meeting in December. So we have this meeting, and then the first meeting in December are the last meetings for the year. Okay, public comment. You've got three minutes, and everybody knows the rules. So just tell us what community you live in. We don't need your address. And green means go, yellow means you've got thirty seconds, and red, red means please stop. I hate interrupting people. And everybody knows the rule, you know, let's, no, no, I'll just read the rules. But let's keep it civil. Okay, that, Miguel Maestas. And while Miguel's making his way there, we want to have Janet Torres Garcia and Denise Adia.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, council members. Miguel Maestas, Associate Director of El Centro de la Raza, the Center for People of All Races. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. We would like to share some information regarding El Centro's application for ARPA funding for financial literacy. Thanks to the Human Services Commission for recommending funding. As you know, El Centro is committed to growing the programs and services for the people of Federal Way and South King County. When we opened our offices here in January of two thousand and twenty, it was part of that commitment to be a partner in serving people here. A month later, we closed the offices due to the COVID pandemic, but that did not mean we stopped. Like all of us, we had to adjust and continue our services virtually and, and distributed personal protection equipment to local businesses in partnership with the Federal Way Chamber of Commerce. El Centro did a huge pivot to be able to partner with the city of Federal Way to distribute half a million dollars to residents for residential assistance and eviction prevention, helping over a hundred and fifty families who had lost work due to the pandemic to stay housed and prevent homelessness during the shutdown. Two weeks after that, the rental assistance support ended, two weeks after it ended, we had a financial audit of that program, and it was a clean and impeccable review. And we were happy to partner with the city with that. And our offices are open again. We have expanded the services, particularly for youth and young scholars in partnership with the Federal Way School District. And El Centro's recent purchase of the skate rink and property was a huge part of our commitment to serve this community. And we, we heard the wishes of folks to keep the rink open, and we did. We've been revitalizing the facility, employing young people from the community. And we are planning a national roller skating event in August that will bring hundreds of visitors to Federal Way. Our plans for the Market Mercado and Park are the next phase of our development plans, and the commitment of four million dollars of federal funding is part of a significant investment and, and development here in Federal Way. And finally, our application for ARPA funding is part of our commitment to bring quality services here. We've been doing financial literacy for many years and have a proven track record for providing quality services. We are very frugal with the resources we receive because the need is great. We provide quality services to as many people as possible, given the funding available. given the funding available. This program is available to everyone and the services are offered in English and Spanish. We have a great ability to outreach to the community. And in the past, we've partnered with Unidos U.S., Washington State Housing Finance Commission, Wells Fargo, Key Bank, amongst others. And in closing, I'll say that the funds we are requesting will help expand our existing program to serve more residents in Federal Way. And we'll work to bring other funds here to help support people to reduce debt, build assets, and overcome poverty. So I'll let my colleagues, Janet and Denisa, talk more specifically with their time about the financial literacy services. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Torres Garcia and Denisa Atonan.
Hello, Mayor and Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about the importance of El Centro de la Raza Financial Empowerment Program. I am Janet Torres Garcia and here's my colleague, Denisa Atonan. We are both federal HUD Housing Certified Counselors. Our financial empowerment program teaches financial management skills to those who take part in the program to achieve economic self-sufficiency and overall financial security. Financial empowerment activities are conducted through group workshops, personalized one-on-one sessions, and lending circles. Through group workshops, participants learn about personal budgeting, savings, debt, and credit. During the one-on-one counseling sessions, participants receive a thorough review of their credit report, along with recommendations and best practices to improve their credit or start establishing credit. The counselor then presents options, including lending circles, to address credit building. The lending circles component of the program increases participants' progress towards their financial goals, particularly building credit, savings, and accessing non-predatory lending personal, non-predatory lending capital in partnership with Mission Asset Fund. Additionally, us counselors help participants create an action plan and a budget using financial documents provided, such as bank statements, paychecks, benefits letters, taxes, et cetera. Participants also receive education on the importance of savings, managing and reducing debt, banking, and local resources to help them address their financial goals.
By participating in our program, low to moderate income individuals and households can improve financial habits, build assets, and increase economic stability, with ongoing support as they work towards their goal. Our program is a key element of El Centro de la Raza's long-term vision for economic advancement for all of our communities, particularly in South King County. For example, a Federal Way family of three were struggling financially as they received a 30-day notice due to falling behind on rent, while the wife had begun experiencing major health issues during and post-pregnancy, which affected her ability to work. All meanwhile, the husband was also struggling to earn enough to keep up with their expenses, which caused significant financial distress. The family received one-on-one counseling, education, and assistance with accessing local resources. With the support received, the family was able to increase income by finding a stable, full-time job, cure arrears, and avoid a legal eviction. As you can see, the program has a significant impact in stabilizing households and creating financial stability. We hope this gives you insight into the importance of our work and supporting the ARPA Financial Empowerment Funds. Thank you again for allowing us to share more about our program.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Perfect timing. All right, thanks. Craig Patrick. And then Anna Patrick. And then Melissa Hamilton, Mark Christie, Susan Strong, Gordon Wallace, Tersa Idahosa.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council President, Council members, community members. Thanks for coming out. My name is Mr. Patrick. I'm a resident of Federal Way. And I really appreciate Chief Wang's presentation on the crime stats. It is really alarming. And we know that everyone in this community and our elected officials in this community are doing the best they can. I'm a history buff, right? I can really draw a comparison between jolly old England and the colonists here in this country. King County seems to be jolly old England and Federal Way seems to be the colonists. Our state legislators are the ones that need to make the changes. We're doing everything we can here, but our hands are tied. We're only going to be as good as our state legislators allow us to be. They're going to keep pushing their bills. They're going to keep closing the jails and they're they're not going to have any consequences for actions. That's their plan. And this is what I think we need to do. We're not, there's no meeting next month. What I really like is all the council members to write Taylor, Reeves, and Wilson Christmas cards and let them know Chief Wang's statistics of what we're dealing with here. We, the people of Federal Way, are losing confidence in these state-elected officials. We are losing confidence in their ability to protect tax-paying citizens. And it's not only bad that, it's a ripple effect. The crime is lowering property values. So now King County wants to up our property taxes. We need to start writing letters to our elected officials. Our representatives on the council need to start writing letters to our elected officials. We, the people, are losing confidence in those folks. We have confidence in these folks and our chief, but we need to start writing letters to Taylor, Wilson, and Reeves about how their policies are affecting our lives. Everyone who's murdered has lost confidence. These kids, these teenagers that are being arrested for these crimes, are we going to their houses? Are we seeing their living conditions? Are we seeing are these crime families? Are they being promoted? I saw a video of a teenage girl pulling a gun out and the mom was like pulling her away, pulling her out of the store. Now that proprietor of that business is strapped with a vest and a weapon to protect his business. This is like 1823, not 2023. I, our expectation as a community is that you reach out to our representatives and you let them know how this is unacceptable. This is ridiculous. Because what's going to happen, it's going to degenerate. And there's going to be retaliation. And it's going to spiral out of control. And it's going to go on and on and on like we've seen in other parts of the country until something is done. Laws and civility is what we're about. Civility. If we lose civility, we've lost it all. Thank you for your time. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving. See you in January.
Anna Patrick. And we do have the, we do have the first meeting in December. So there's only, there's only one meeting in December. All right.
So, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council President, Council, and public. So I'm just going to kind of write on his coattails and and I concur, you know, when we have a lawless society, people get frustrated. And, you know, I think we see that kind of out in the public, some of the things that we're seeing. It's like the Wild West. And it doesn't feel safe. It's keeping people up at night. It's keeping me up at night. The things I sent you, some of you, not the council, but I sent the mayor, police chief, a blog that I wrote about the closing of the jails. It's coming. They're going to be asking our state legislators to change the laws so that the county isn't responsible for keeping people safe. And they're going to just pass that on to cities to handle that. It's very concerning that it just, it's like, we can't let our guard down. It's just, it's constant, incessant, what what's being done here. We're being set up here in Federal Way. And and it's, you know, they claim to be all about equity and everything. So let's take a look. Let's start taking a look at all the numbers and and the impacts on communities like South King County and how that compares to, say, Bellevue, you know, good for them. But is it, let's take a look at that. How's that impacting everybody differently? And so when we talk about asking the legislators for money, we like stats. We want to see the numbers. But we don't want skewed stats. We want real stats. You know that. You've heard it, heard it from me quite a bit. So let's, let's be realistic about what's happening and realize that sometimes those stats, stats get skewed because of the policies that we're being burdened with here. And we don't have laws being enforced. Some stuff's just slipping through the cracks. So please be careful who you have do the studies, the legislators, if they do fund it. Let's make sure that whoever's doing it isn't going to be biased in how they're doing the study. And taking a really comprehensive look at it and regionally the effects. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Hamilton. And then Mark Christie.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor, Council President, Council and community. My name is Melissa Hamilton and I'm a Federal Way resident. Well, here we are. Tonight's discussion will include our legislative priorities. I hope you've had some productive discussions in your groups these last couple of weeks. I think it's obvious by now what has caused crime to skyrocket. Thank you, Chief Wong, for that presentation. And I hope it's obvious to you. The legislature wants you to make a case for them on why they should revisit this law. So make the case. Show them the statistics. Make them listen to personal stories of how this legislation and their gross negligence in addressing this issue has harmed their constituents. My church just planned a funeral for a family of a young man. His vehicle was stolen. He felt like he really needed that vehicle to get to work. Tracked the vehicle with an air tag, attempted to retrieve it himself. A deadly shootout incurred and he was shot to death by the criminals who stole his vehicle. The man that tragically lost his life in the O'Reilly's parking lot here in Federal Way was shot to death by criminals who were driving in a stolen vehicle. The same criminals had also put a gun to a five-year-old's head while they burglarized an occupied home. Absolutely horrendous crimes are being committed by criminals driving in stolen vehicles, all while, under the protection of our state legislature-approved non-pursuit laws. This was foreseeable that their omission to act on this issue would result in this harm. And that is what our legislature needs to hear. This law hasn't saved lives. It's destroyed lives. It's destroyed people's businesses. It's destroyed peace and any sense of safety we might have had prior to this being enacted. I personally carry pepper spray now, any, everywhere I go, because I never know when it's going to be my time to get carjacked or assaulted or whatever. I see people in my neighborhood. I talk to them. Many of them are concealed carrying now, even while walking their dogs down their own street. I don't have a lot of influence sitting out here, although I've been trying to build a case as well in three-minute increments, if you haven't noticed. I'm not a lawyer, but I do know a little something about criminal justice. I've taken Criminal Justice 101 and 401, and deterrence and crime statistics and how all that works. You, however, have influence or are put there by people who believe in you. They believe you can make positive change for this city. The community doesn't always agree on everything, but I hope you've been listening and realize there's one thing we do agree on, is that we all want to feel safe in our city. One last comment. If you're looking to get the City of Tacoma on board, you might want to talk to them about how many times Hilltop Heritage Middle School has been in a lockdown due to stolen vehicles being driven erratically through their parking lot. Nine lockdowns this year, and parents are fed up with it. So Mayor Woodards, I'm sure, is looking for ways to keep Tacoma school students safe. So maybe talk to her about how fixing the pursuit laws can help with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, Melissa, just take that document that you've written and email it to each of the state legislators, you know. Okay?
All right, thank you. And Mark Christie. And then Susan Strong.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. I want to give you some encouragement. I mean, you've been hearing a lot about crime, you'd better go and do something, or something you're doing right and want you to stick to your guns, the housing problems. You get bothered about that all the time. And your chief's wife, he knows that housing is mental illness, it's drugs, it's alcohol. It's not just a housing problem. Homelessness is not just a housing problem. And you guys have the right instincts on that. Other places are doing it the wrong way, and I can give you a good example. My cryptic remark about a Tom East and that, forgive me for that, but I'm going to explain to you what that's about. A Tom East was somebody who was a former neighbor of mine. I live at the SAG Apartments near the Bus Stapo. He was brought in and it turns out he was a, an addict and an alcoholic. And they took this Seattle-King County approach, just put him in a nice place. And the matter of the Tom East, that he is now dead when he drug overdosed himself. That's how good the Seattle Way works for dealing with homeless people. It's not a housing problem. You can just wind up with a coffin case in a nice, warm room. That's a second reason for you to stick to your guns. If you need an eyewitness to testify for you that you have better instincts than the Seattle ones, call on me. I watched it happen. Real story. I'll give you a third reason that you need to stick to your guns. And this is amazing. Right as putting my thoughts together to kind of present this, I was playing a recording of the Greg Kelly Show from yesterday. To those who watch that kind of thing, good, good show. I encourage you to watch it. And believe it or not, he had a former addict on. Who knows the territory about drug addictions? And here are his exact words. His words that you cannot give a fentanyl addict an apartment. They will die in it. I watched that happen to somebody named a Tom East. Your police officer is familiar, your instincts are right about it. And I could not believe it. So you've got three good reasons. A good police officer will back you up. They treat it like mental illness and alcohol and drugs. You've got an eyewitness in front of you. That it's certainly a lot more than a housing problem. That's not the way to fix it. And hey, I even heard it right for myself. It's not a one-off matter. A longtime drug addict said it very bluntly. It's not one-off. You cannot put an addict into an apartment. They will die in it. So stick to your guns. Your instincts are right. Keep doing your solutions. They're the right ones. And thanks for doing a good job and a lot of other things, too. Have a good night.
All right, thank you. Susan Strong.
I'm always the shortest one in the room, so I have to move this down. Thank you, Chief Wong, for your report. That was fabulous. Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, Council President Coach Mark, council members. I'm Susan Strong. I live in Federal Way. I stopped at a 7-Eleven store the other day and I noticed that they had installed some cement pillars in front of their store. They were about three feet high, about six inches in diameter, four feet apart. I thought, wow. If the hair salon where I had my hair done had done that, they wouldn't have had a truck back in and knocked the whole front of their store in. So I tried to ask the fellow at the store about it, but we had a language problem. So I decided, I'm going to see how many 7-Eleven stores have thought of this. So I won't bore you. I have the addresses. I could give you every single address. But we have six 7-Elevens in Federal Way and two of them have gone to this measure. So one is the one on 312th and First Avenue. That's the one that I went into. But what I noticed with them is it's only in front of their store. There's some kind of a pizza or something next door and they didn't do it. So it had to be the expense of the owner. I don't know how 7-Eleven works, but it was obviously one store went to that cost. And the other store is on Pacific Highway South and 356. So way the other end of Federal Way, they've done the same thing and they might be a newer store. The other one, I observed one that didn't have the pillars, but they had bars on their windows. That kind of helps. And they had less glass and more brick. So it makes me sad that these store owners had to go this far to protect their property from theft and damage. Sadly, this is another outward sign of how far Federal Way has gone in the wrong direction. For clarification, I give Olympia the credit for this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Wallace.
My name is Gordon Wallace. My wife and I attended the recent financial literacy program at the Federal Way Community Center. The funds that this esteemed council provided is actually an investment in Federal Way. The information and financial tools presented is information I wish we'd had 10, 20, even 30 years ago. The nine evenings spent attending this program has changed the financial outlook for my wife and I. In those nine sessions, with the tools they provided us, we paid off thousands of dollars in debt and put more than $6,000 in savings in just nine weeks. The program provides each attendee with information no creditor ever will, and that is how to be debt-free. Creditors make their money by charging interest rates that are designed to keep all of us in debt. Without the information this program presented to us, we would at this moment still be mired in debt with no real hope of ever paying it off. The course was attended by people from all walks of life, people just like myself. Those of us who attended this program are now able to spend our money in Federal Way instead of sending it to state creditors who won't spend a dime here. They don't even reside in Washington State. We're now able to look through future funding requests, such as special levies for city streets, city parks, continued funding of existing programs, funding for additional programs, even funding for repairs or expansion to the Federal Way Community Center. Special levies for school improvements, funding for additional police officers. Special levies for school improvements, funding for additional police officers, levy funding for additional firefighters of South King Fire and Rescue, medic one that protects the citizens of this city, and we don't have to worry if it's an increase we can afford. Breaking the vicious cycle of debt benefits the city, the citizens of this city, and I strongly encourage the esteemed council members to continue funding this program. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. Getting ready to be happy Thanksgiving, so I hope you enjoy your Thanksgiving as well. My name is Tiersa Idoza. I'm here as a community member. I'm also the diversity commissioner, so I'm here with two hats on. The first hat that I'm going to go with is the community member hat. Thank you for everything that the police commissioner said. Chief Wong, a lot of good information, but as I stand, also, we cannot forget about how those people became drug addicts. We don't talk about the millions and billions of dollars that were given to the states to help those people get their lives back. And I've asked several times to have some kind of accounting on what Federal Way is doing with that money that they received when they sued the Stackler family and Purdue Pharma. Those billions of dollars came to several states, so I don't know where Federal Way, where that money is at to help do some of those programs. The other things that are happening is, we're also creating people homelessness and things like that with those credit card and debit card scammers. Most of the stores in this city have now gone to self-service, so you have no choice but to use your credit card at one of those machines. And they are getting ripped off daily, hundreds and thousands of dollars in this city, and Washington State is one of the worst, if you do the research. And there was a news article on it just a couple weeks ago, so you can fact-check it yourself. But when someone steals your money, they do not give it back to you. So they will rip off your entire bank account, and you don't have any recourse on getting your money back. And if you are successful some way, it does take you several months, and at the end of the day, you probably had to hire an attorney. And if they took all your money, you probably don't have access to that. So again, we're creating ways that people are being made homeless because they don't have any other help. So with some of that money that was coming from those situations, we need to be able to do something about that. That also helps the police because it then keeps people in their homes, and then they're not on the street stealing and robbing and self-medicating. So, okay, now I'll put on my diversity hat. I just wanted to say that I'm here for the diversity commission because we have a problem with the fact that we have three open vacancies, and they've been open for pretty close to a year now. So we're not understanding why the city council is not having a session to put those three people in office. We can't do our jobs. We have some real important stuff that has to be done on our work plan for next month, December, that we're not going to be able to do. We don't have a chair. We don't have one or two other positions that are voting positions. So we're working the people that are there volunteering, and you're not allowing us to do our job. So we think it's maybe an oversight, but we are asking that at this next meeting, that you call for a special meeting, and then you have several people that have applied, please appoint three new diversity commissioners and some that can actually vote, so we can actually get our chair and get moving. Since you appointed us to do the job, allow us to do that work. We appreciate it, and thank you very much.
Thanks, Tiersa. Okay, I think that's all I have for pink sheets. We've got a couple for the public hearings that we have later on the agenda. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? All right, thank you very much, and it is the most important thing we do, to hear from the people that we work for. All right, now we're on to item five, council committee and regional committee reports. Parks, Recreation, Human Services, and Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Walsh.
Yes. Our committee met last week, a week ago today, on the 14th. We, at that time, received a report from the PAC, and also items L through R on today's consent agenda went through the committee at that time, as well as we heard from items B and C on the public hearing agenda tonight, and item C on council business. And so we'll be covering a lot of those things tonight and moving them on.
Very good. All right, thank you very much.
Also, this isn't necessarily council, but with the senior center food bank, that check that was provided yesterday at the food bank, if you thought it was busy last Thursday, it was twice as busy yesterday. And 45 minutes after the food bank was supposedly closed, there were still cars going down the road from it. And a special thanks to Shelley Pauls and the We Love Our City group. They had provided turkeys for the people. We contacted them, and she made two more runs to get more turkeys yesterday morning to make sure that everybody received either a turkey or ham that went through the food bank.
She's amazing.
And so she and her group are awesome and do a great job. And the thing is, they were not only doing it for the senior center food bank, but also for other organizations as well. And so a great hats off to the We Love Our City group and Shelley Pauls.
Thank you, council member. Thank you for the work you do. Thank you for the quick tour you gave me. And also, he has quite the singing voice when we were in. He's actually a great singer, and so we were there, and the impromptu God Bless America, it was very nice. Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it. Okay, now we've got Land Use Transportation Committee, Councilmember Doby.
Yes, our next meeting is going to be December 4th, and right now we have an agenda with about eight items on it that are mostly house cleaning and finishing up the end of the year. There's always could be something comes up that's not expected, but I'm sure EJ and Keith will get to me on that. And some of the agenda items that you'll see tonight, I have gone through land use, and we'll be talking to some about them in the public hearing that'll be coming up. So it's been a pretty busy year, and hopefully our next meeting will be not one of our longest like the last ones have been, but one of our more efficient ones. Not that they're not, but a little shorter. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Finance, Economic Development, and Regional Affairs Committee, Fedrec, Councilmember Trent.
Thank you, Mayor. So we have two audit answers for the second reading and actment tonight for your consideration. Council Bill Number 866, 2023, and 2024 by Annual Budget Midyear Amendment, and Council Bill 867 for the 2024 Poverty Tax Levy. And our next meeting is going to be on next Tuesday, November 28, at 5:00 PM in this room. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I just have a few reminders for council members. One is to register for Association of Washington City's Elected Officials Essentials Workshop. Even if you've been on council for several years, it's still a good idea to review all the information that they have to offer. It's Saturday, December 9, and you do need to pre-register for that. And you can stay home and do it on Zoom, or you can go to Olympia or some of the other cities that it's being offered in. SCA has a workshop, Jurassic Workshop on council meetings, and how to have council meetings run smoothly, and what council members can do. That is free, November 30, from 4:00 to 5:15, but you need to register for that. And if you're interested in being on the National League of Cities Committee, apply by December 1. I've just finished out my first year serving on one of their committees, and I've learned a lot. It's been a very good experience, and I would encourage you guys to look into that. And if you need any assistance, let me know, their application, just let me know, and I can help you. Councilmember Asefa Dawson is on her way home from the National Foundation of Women Legislators Conference that we were at last week. And when she gets home, she and I will give a report at our next council meeting about that conference and what we learned. But I would like to say that Councilmember Kathy Horgody from Tuck Willa, who's retiring this year, she's been on the council since January of 2008, was awarded the Woman of Excellence Award from National Foundation of Women Legislators for Washington State, and we're very proud of her. She has done a great job serving Tuck Willa and South King County. And while we were at that conference, National League of Cities had their annual conference in Atlanta, and I was elected to a two-year term for the Women in Municipal Leadership Board. So I'm excited. I didn't know that that was going to be happening because I wasn't there, so I'm excited that that happened.
All right, thank you. All right, Council President.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you for following through on providing the money to both food banks. They can use that money with their buying power to, Molten Service Center, for example, can triple what you've given them for. And we have so many people in need in our community, especially with inflation, the way it's going. And so all of you, if you consider it, if you go to the back of the food bank, which is Molten Service Center, which is on 336 and about 9th, go to the back, and you can just drop off, if you have an extra turkey, because you've got a free one, because if you buy so much at a certain store, you can get a free turkey, just drop it off at the food bank. They'll be very, very happy with that, or anything that you have would be very, very helpful. And so I understand that Cheryl, our lady who has an umbrella set up in front of the food bank, the Molten Service Center, or Day Center, rather, has found housing through Catholic Community Districts at one of the hotels, and so they're looking for products for her for her new home. And Cheryl is a woman with mental health issues, and our concern was that if she was in the woods, she would be victimized. So if anybody has an extra dining room chair, extra bed frame, or if you call the Day Center, they will get that to her at her new residence. So anyway, that's another way you can help people in our community. So thank you very much, Mayor, and God bless all of you and have a happy Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, that's a great story about Cheryl. I was glad to see that, and a lot of people working to help her. Okay, now we're on to the consent agenda. These items have gone through committee, it can be passed all at once. I'll read through the items, and then I'll ask council if there's an item they would want pulled for separate consideration. All right, item A, minutes for the November 8, 2023, regular and special meeting minutes. B, streetlight infill project, 85% design and authorization to bid. Item C, neighborhood traffic safety, NTS program project, South 304th Pacific Highway South to 28th Avenue South. D, adaptive traffic control signal, city center phase two project acceptance. E, citywide pedestrian safety improvements, approval to award. F, 2024 asphalt overlay program preliminary project list and authorization to bid. G, citywide adaptive control system, ITS improvements, phase one, two, and three project acceptance. H, 2022 storm pipe repair project, project acceptance. I, former bridges barn demolition, project acceptance. J, transportation demand management implementation agreement with Washington State Department of Transportation. K, authorization to enter into an interlocal with King County for Conservation Futures Tax Levy CFT grant. L, 2024 diversity commission work plan. M, community fireworks display for the Red, White, and Blues Festival Contract. N, staffing position control change at the Federal Way Community Center. O, systems for public safety agreement amendment number three. P, Internet Crimes Against Children, ICAC, Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, between the Seattle Police Department and Federal Way PD for funding for officer support activities and training. Q, Pierce Transit Extra Duty Patrol Police Services Interlocal Agreement Amendment Number Four. And R, jail services agreement, score jail amendment number one. Councilor, are there any items you would want pulled for separate consideration? All right, Council President.
Thank you, I move approval of items A through R.
Second.
I've been in motion in a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. Item seven, public hearing ordinance, amendment to the Wild Waves Concomitant Development Agreement. At this time, I will open the public hearing. We'll have a presentation from Keith Niven, our Community Development Director, with applicants Angiee Hills, Clark Martin and Peterson, PS, and Dan McKinney, Transpo, attending remotely. And then we'll have an opportunity for public comment. All right, Keith, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, City Council, Council President Kochmar, Deputy Mayor Honda. Keith Niven, for the record, for the public hearing, Keith Niven, Community Development Director. There we go. I can only do so many things at once, and...
You're sure of it?
Exactly. Clearly, I was pushing the limit. Okay, so this evening is a proposed amendment to the Wild Waves Development Agreement. The policy question in front of the city council is, should the city approve the proposed amendments to the Wild Waves Concomitant Development Agreement? That is not a word that's usually in my vocabulary, so I did provide a definition of it. For those of you who don't know, concomitant is something that accompanies or is collaterally connected with something else. So in 1998, the city and the property owner entered into a development agreement, and it has been amended so far three times, in 2000, 2002, and lastly, 2017. And right now, we're considering a proposed fourth amendment to that development agreement. So the proposed amendments, I'm going to go through those this evening. The first one is changes to the permitted uses. So the first one is hotel, and that is to remove the acreage limitations and allow hotels as a primary use on the entire site. The current agreement limits the amount of the land that Wild Waves has to a maximum of five acres for hotels, and this amendment would remove that limitation. The second is related to warehousing and distribution. It would remove the limitation of 25% and allow it as a primary use on the entire site. The current agreement does allow warehousing and distribution, but it really limits it to accessory to the theme park. And so this proposed change would remove those limitations. The next proposed amendment is clarification to the hours of operation. Right now, it's limited to 9:30 AM to 10:00 PM, and those limitations really make sense for the amusement park. If, based on the previous slide, the agreement was amended to allow hotel or distribution, these time limitations really don't make sense for those uses. So this one is really very much tethered to that first proposed amendment. The next one is traffic mitigation and impact fees, and we're really providing a clarification that applications for future, and this says non-regional commercial recreational facility, aka theme park, uses or development shall be subject to SEPA, that's the State Environmental Policy Act, so that's environmental review, traffic impact fees, and concurrency management processes, and shall prepare a traffic study and mitigate all impacts not mitigated in the SEPA baseline. And let me translate that, that's a lot of planning talk. What this means is basically, if they were to be allowed to use the site for those other uses, hotel and distribution, the traffic impacts for those uses have not been evaluated at this point. They would be evaluated when those applications for those uses actually came in for permit. So there'd be traffic studies, there'd be mitigation associated with them if those studies showed that it needed that mitigation. So this is just a long way to say that this proposed amendment has not done any of that analysis. The next amendment is to extend the term of the agreement. The existing agreement is in effect until 2037, and the proposed amendment is for it to be 30 years with basically a reset starting in 2023, which would take, the existing development agreement would allow it to extend all the way to 2053. Review procedures, this is just a clarification piece. It would require additional site plan and landscaping plan detail to be provided for the hotel and warehousing uses, if those are allowed. This is a map that basically shows the public notice distribution. So right now, Wild Waves is the property that's in the center of this donut, kind of showing up as pink. And then all the properties that are in yellow on this map should have received a notice for this proposed hearing and the SEPA determination that was issued on the... that was issued on the proposed amendment to the agreement. So the mayor's recommendation is to approve the proposed ordinance. Right now, because it's a public hearing, I'm here to answer just, just really your clarifications and questions. If there's anything I said that you want further information on, I'm more than happy to provide that now. If not, then I'll cede the floor to the applicant to make their presentation, and then ultimately deliberations would happen, I think, during the ordinance review later on in the agenda.
All right. Any questions so far, Keith? All right, thank you. All right, is it Anne Gigi? We've got Jeff Stock here as well. Great to see you, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell and members of the Federal Way City Council. My name is Anne Gigi. I'm with Hills, Clark, Martin, and Peterson, and we are legal counsel for the applicant, which is Jeff Stock and his entities for the proposed amendment. For the applicant's presentation tonight, you'll hear from Jeff Stock, owner of Wild Waves property, and from Dan McKinney of Transpo. Dan is our transportation consultant. Dan is joining us via Zoom from New York City tonight, so I'm looking for Ms. Marshall to help with that. We also have available tonight Morgan Shook of Eco Northwest. Morgan is here to be available to answer questions if council has any regarding any economic prospects of the proposal. Mayor Farrell, we have a request to be able to hold a couple minutes of our time for the end of the public hearing in case there are any comments that we think would be helpful to have additional information.
Of course.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I will turn it over to Jeff Stock.
Oops, I'm sorry. You can put a soccer ball at my foot and 50,000 people around me, I'm fine. But small group like this, I'm a little nervous. So Mayor Farrell, Susan Honda, or Deputy Mayor Susan Honda, and Council President Linda Kochmeyer, and the members of the council, thank you for letting me talk. Wild Waves has been a part of my life for almost 34 years. The first development agreement between Wild Waves and Federway was passed by the Federway City Council in 1998. Our agreement has previously been updated three times in 2000, 2002, and 2017. The update we are working on now will help Wild Waves lock in a new long-term lease, giving the park time to make major investments, will sustain a new generation of family fund. The pandemic was devastating for all businesses, but particularly Wild Waves, a place where families from the whole region gather to laugh, play, and spend their time together. Even after health restrictions were lifted, vulnerable people hesitated to come back. They barely survived. Today, in the event of a catastrophic catastrophe, the property could still sit vacant for years, costing jobs and creating space for future encampments. This update is about giving the city of Federway the flexibility to permit a new job center very quickly. Any development, whether it's hotel or warehouses, are subject to the project level SEPA and would require us to work with the communities around the property and the city of Federway, just like we always have. But with the additional viable uses approved now, the city of Federway will have the option to pivot quickly and sustain the many jobs that Wild Waves has provided since the 1980s. I have worked in and between, I have worked in and been a part of this community since 1985, and I care deeply about its health and success. I am proud that so many jobs have come from Wild Waves, and I want the property to always be a part of the economic success of Federway. My family has been committed, as I said, my family has been committed to our community in Federway since 1985. Wild Waves has been a major part of my life for almost 34 years, and I look forward to another 30.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, and then do we have, is Dan McKinney?
Oh, Dan McKinney from Zoom, please.
Yeah, can you hear me at all? I'm on the, I'm on the phone here.
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, great. I'm not sure if I can, doesn't look like I can do video, but I'll just give you a quick presentation. My name's Dan McKinney. I'm a managing principal with the Transpo Group. We're a local firm that specializes in transportation planning, traffic engineering, and been working with the city staff on transportation-related analyses for Wild Waves and a number of projects within the city over the years. I just happen to be in New York right now, early for the holidays, so that's why I couldn't be there today. As has been explained, the amendment to the agreement would allow the ability for the hotel or warehouse to be a primary use or occupy more than a small portion of the site. We worked with the city staff to kind of compare the amount of traffic that could be generated by these uses as compared to what is generated and has been mitigated by Wild Waves. In short, redevelopment of the site for a warehouse or hotel use is anticipated to generate less traffic than what has already been generated and mitigated by Wild Waves. As has been stated, there is no proposal to redevelop the site, and this agreement just provides the ability to propose these as options for development if an unanticipated event were to occur that closes Wild Waves. If another use, like a hotel or warehouse, were proposed, a traffic analysis and SEPA evaluation would be required to evaluate specific transportation impacts from the proposal at that time. A transportation analysis at that time of the proposal would be required to evaluate and mitigate any issues that are related to a specific proposal that are above and beyond what has been mitigated by Wild Waves. The evaluation would address many of the comments and concerns that we've heard and raised by the public, which could include evaluating specific impacts to the neighborhood based upon specific access points or circulation from the development, any truck-related impacts from a warehouse, or even differences in seasonality of traffic related to those uses. That's all I had for you for now, and if there's any questions, that can be available to answer those as needed. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Dan. Do we have anybody else online? All right. And Anne, do we have any, any other presentation from the, you know, from, from your team, from the applicant?
Thought it was time, just a presentation.
Very good. All right, thank you. Okay, all right, now we've got signed up Jody Neuper with Wild Waves for public here. We'll move into the public comment. Same rules apply for three minutes each, and this is under this section.
Hello, Mayor and council members. I'm Jody Neuper. I'm the Park President of Wild Waves. Wild Waves has a longstanding relationship with EPI, and we support and are excited for the opportunities that this amendment provides. The lease extension allows us for future growth and improvements for our property and enhancements for our valued guests. We've been an integral part of the Federway community. We're one of the most popular destinations in the Pacific Northwest and have been for almost over 40 years. We look forward to delivering world-class family fund for decades more to come. Thank you.
Thanks, Jody. All right, are there any, are there any more public comments for the public hearing? Anymore? All right, Councilmember W, do you have a motion?
Yeah, I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Those are for the next, yeah, exactly. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed, and we'll move on to the next matter. We'll see that, we'll have that in the, later on in the, in the meeting. Okay, item B, First Amendment to the 2023 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan. I'll now open the public hearing. We'll have a presentation from Kim Bakrak, Human Services Coordinator, and then we'll have public comment, and we'll go from there. Kim, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Share my screen. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council President, Council. My name is Kim Bakrak. I'm the Human Services Coordinator for your city of Federway. And this evening, I am going to present to you the First Amendment to the 2023 Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG Annual Action Plan. The policy question before you this evening, should city council approve the First Amendment to the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan? A little bit of overview of the CDBG program. This is a program of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, providing annual grants to jurisdictions to provide decent housing, sustainable living environments, and expanded economic opportunities, primarily for low and moderate-income persons. CDBG has three national objectives. All projects must meet at least one of these objectives. The first, to benefit low- to moderate-income persons. Currently, the city's projects fall under this goal. Two, to eliminate slum blight, and three, urgent need. The 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan, which is the plan that we're currently under, is a plan to assess affordable housing, community development needs, and market conditions to facilitate place-based funding of local projects. The con-plan goals include, include, one, expanded economic opportunities; two, preserve affordable housing; three, prevent and address homelessness; and four, establish and maintain suitable living environments. These con-plans are implemented by the annual action plans. So what is an annual action plan? This is a document required by HUD for any jurisdiction that receives CDBG funds. It is a summary of planned actions and activities demonstrating how federal funds will support the community in achieving goals and outcomes set in the con-plan. 2023 is the fourth year of the city's con-plan of 2020-2024. Very technically, it is a document produced in HUD's database and management system. So a little bit more about the CDBG funds that we receive. The funds do have a cap on public services and administration. So 20% of our allocation is able to go towards planning and administration. 15% is able to go towards public service, and the remainder goes towards community economic revitalization of funding. So the amendment that we are proposing this evening includes the following. Multi-service center Villa Capri to increase the funding by $71,727 for a total of $400,000. Previously, this project had been funding, but we've recently learned that it does need to be increased just to provide more full rehabilitation of their facility. The second is for Habitat for Humanity Minor Home Repair Program. And the proposition here is to name Habitat as a subrecipient for funding $100,000. And thirdly, Habitat for Humanity Housing Repair Program. So proposing to add the program for $150,000, reallocating funds from prior year that had not been used for the housing repair allocations. Timeline for this, we've had a public hearing at the Human Services Commission October 16, and this evening is an additional public hearing. Following approval by council, we will be submitting the plan to HUD. And then any questions?
Counsel, any questions? All right, thank you. Stay close, just in case. Do we have any public comment on this? Okay, anybody with the public like to comment on this? All right. All right, Councilmember Walsh?
I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Matter's unanimous. All right, Councilmember Walsh?
I move to approval of the First Amendment to the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, matter passes. Thank you, Kim. All right, item C, Program Year 2024 Community Development Block Grant CDBG Annual Action Plan. I'll now open the public hearing. Kim, another presentation.
Thank you. Good evening once again, Council. This presentation might look very similar to the previous one, but before you now, we have the 2024 CDBG Annual Action Plan. The policy question before you now, should city council approve the 2024 CDBG Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan? I'm not going to read over the overview again, because it is the exact same as the previous year's overview. So again, what the annual action plan is, a couple notes here is that the 2023 Annual Action Plan was 700, or, sorry, the funds for the 2023 plan were $778,309. We are anticipating similar funding for 2024, but we won't know the official number until DC approves it. So similarly, we will have the same caps at 20% planning and admin, 15% public service, and the remaining 65% at SURF. So the program administration here, which would total about $156,660, includes general program oversight and implementation for activities such as requests for proposals, contracting and subrecipient compliance, drafting of CDBG plans and reports, and other related administrative requirements, and also community engagement and outreach. The public services that we're proposing for 2024 include apprenticeship and non-traditional employment for women anew at $12,000, a Federway Inclusion Program at $30,000, Ryan Employment Services at $18,000, and Solid Ground at $56,000, totaling $116,000. You'll notice that these were the same programs that were approved for the 2023 plan. We do run these contracts on two-year cycles, but we do have to get them approved again. For the SURF, or Community Economic Revitalization Funding, we're proposing that $100,000 goes to Habitat for Humanity Minor Housing Repair Program, Habitat for Humanity Home Repair Program at $146,649, and Highline Business Development Programs at $100,000, totaling $346,649. The timeline, we had a public hearing with the Human Service Commission, and then this evening is our second public hearing. After a council approval, the annual action plan will be submitted to HUD with the King County Consortium, depending on the timing of receiving allocation with other consortium members' timelines. Should the annual action, annual allocation be different than anticipated, prorate adjustments will be made to administration, public services, and SURF projects. If there is a significant change, the citizen participation plan and city procurement may require additional processes and engagement. Are there any questions?
Counsel, any questions? All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment? All right, Councilmember Walsh?
I move to close the hearing.
A second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Councilmember Walsh?
I move approval of the 2024 Community Development Block Grant.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Thanks, Kim. Great job. Okay, item eight, Council Business. A, Notification of Emergency Procurement and Authorization to Repair and Replace Vehicles and Equipment Due to Vandalism and Theft at Steel Lake Maintenance Facility. That just happened last week. So EJ Walsh, our Public Works Director, and John Hutton, our Parks Director, are here for a presentation about what occurred. And while they're doing that, Councilmember Sephada Hassan has joined, and she joined at 8:19 p.m. for the record.
So good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council President, members of council, members of the public. So myself and Parks Director Hutton are here tonight to bring an update to council on the maintenance yard theft, as well as notification of the emergency procurement in accordance with the city's purchasing manual, and authorization to repair and replace vehicles and equipment due to vandalism and theft at Steel Lake Maintenance Facility. So I'll start the presentation, and then I'm going to turn it over to Director Hutton to finish it, if PowerPoint advances. So the policy question before council tonight is, should the city council authorize the public works and parks departments to repair and replace vehicles, equipment, and property to allow for continued services to the community? So there's a little bit of background information, and the chief alluded to this in his presentation earlier tonight as well. On Wednesday, November 15, there was a break-in at Steel Lake Maintenance Yard off of 28th Avenue, which resulted in significant losses to the city. They targeted, the theft targeted vehicles... They targeted the theft, targeted vehicles. They stole one of our large equipment trailers and then attached that to the truck that they broke into the yard with, and then proceeded to load additional stuff of ours onto the trailer. They also vandalized a number of the vehicles themselves in addition to the equipment. So the same, later the same day, so this happened for argument's sake, basically midnight to 2:00 AM. Later the same day, at our request, the mayor authorized an emergency declaration to replace the equipment that was necessary to continue operations until we could have the council meeting tonight. For example, they stole all of the pumps we use to de-water roads when there's flooding. So we, as a city, had none. They stole all the chainsaws, so we had none. So there were certain equipment that we needed to replace immediately to be able to ensure continued service in an emergency setting. So that was done. That looks like the Parks Essential Equipment Authorization was a not-to-exceed amount of $10,000. Public Works was $50,000. That critical equipment has been purchased and is already operational. We procured that basically Wednesday and Thursday last week. So the summary of the theft, there's a couple of slides on this that I will share. We, as our combined departments' maintenance staffs, have inventoried as much as we can. And, you know, the vehicles, the large equipment we have, and even like chainsaws and blowers, we have pretty exacting inventories of that with serial numbers. So that stuff is, it is a labor-intensive process to inventory, but it's fairly straightforward. Things like shovels and socket sets and the tools that are inside the trucks, we do not have that level of inventory control on them. So inventorying that is a much more labor-intensive process, and that is why you see at the bottom of the slide that as we proceed to do work in the community in both departments over the upcoming weeks, we may end up out on a site and go, hey, where's the blank? And realize that there are some additional small tools that we have that are not on this list. So this is a list of the vehicles that was damaged, as well as the three trailers on the bottom. So our emergency call-out trailer that we use to shut down roads was vandalized, and half of the cones were stolen out of it, most of the road barricades. Our generator trailer that we use for televising and fixing clogged stormwater pipes is that 9217 at the bottom of the list. And then the fence and gate itself was facility damage, but it is included on this list. On the stolen property, this will be several slides. That Olympic tilt-deck trailer that I mentioned, that is the large equipment trailer. That is something that we have as a city modified. It started life as a heavy-duty equipment tilt-deck trailer for moving pavers. As a city, we had it modified about 10 years ago to allow it to carry additional equipment than what it was designed for. So we have, as a city, customized that, and, you know, that was lost as well. That also had a significant amount of chains and tie-downs and binders and all of the stuff that's used with the trailer on it that left as well. You can see there's a, I'm not going to read to council all of the tools, but you can see it's a fairly expensive and extensive list of everything from air compressors to battery-powered tools, or what they sound like. It's drills and impact drivers and sawzalls and stuff like that. Gas-powered tools is blowers and chainsaws and hedge pruners and everything else we use on a daily basis. In addition to what was taken out of vehicles, they stole, I think, all but one of the spare tires that the city owns for our dump trucks that we use for emergency operations in the winter. They stole spare tires for our F-350 to 550, our large fleet vehicles, as well as for our mowers. 20-gallon wheeled fuel caddy doesn't sound like much, but that's an OSHA-approved fuel caddy that we use for ethanol-free gasoline for small engines. It's about a $1,000 piece of equipment in and of itself. Miscellaneous tools, so this is everything that was just in the yard, so in storage containers and around the property. So in terms of dollars, this is, the way we inventoried it is it is broken up by division. So in transparency to council, we kept it in the same format. So from the swim inspectors, that's mostly that camera trailer that we use, as well as hand tools and picks and shovels and chains and et cetera. Swim maintenance, that is mostly power equipment that was in that list. Streets maintenance, again, mostly power equipment. Parks maintenance is mostly hand tools and battery-powered tools. Fleet maintenance, so they took an acetylene torch to one of our trucks and literally cut the truck, so there's about $30,000 worth of damage in that fleet maintenance, just to one truck. Facility and trailer, the two large items in that are the trailer itself, as well as repairing the fence and the gate at the north end. We have effectively temporarily secured in a fashion that it's not operable at this point. But fixing that gate is a significant amount of that money, as well as the trailer itself, fully outfitted, to get it back to what it was, is about a $32,000 line item. So it adds up fast. The one thing I do want to be very clear on is this funding that you see on this screen is not in addition to what the mayor authorized as the emergency declaration. That is inclusive of this. So however you want to think about it, whether you want to think about that as this duplicates that list or this is in total, not in addition. But I do want to be very clear that this is not, we're not adding. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Parks Director Hutton.
Before we get into this, John, before you get into yours, I want, before we go to the next about what we do next, and we'll talk about the onsite security. The chief mentioned this. The alarm went off several times, and our police officers went initially, didn't see anything, looked around, came back, and our officers actually came into contact with the people who had this in their possession. They confronted them, tried to stop them, and by state law, we were prohibited from pursuing them. I want you to know that. $213,000 of your money got stolen when our police officers were there, could have recovered it, a trailer, all of this equipment, and we were prohibited by law from pursuing it. Let that sink in for a minute. That's what the chief was referring to, and that's why it's part of our legislative agenda. Go ahead, please.
Mayor, can I ask one question? Does that number include sales tax?
Yes.
John? So basically, we did this next site because we cannot have this happen again. We literally cannot allow this to happen again, and that's why we're doing, that's why I directed what I did. Go ahead, John.
Good evening. I wish I was speaking on a better topic. After this happened, immediately after this happened, the mayor directed us to reach out to our third-party security contractor, Pierce County Security, and on an interim basis, get onsite security overnight, every night, until this happens. As long as we don't have employees there, we will have it guarded onsite in addition to the other measures that we can take. So to continue for a 12-month basis, so after tonight, we'll reach out to them to extend with your approval. So as you can see, the weekday cost is $10 hours a day at $114,400. Weekends, 10 hours a day, 68, 640, and holiday premium, which is overtime, obviously, at $4,400. So that is where we're looking at, and Pierce County Security was fabulous in their response, was able to be there that very next night and have been there every night since. So this additional cost is going to be $187,440 for a year.
That's on top of the 213. And this is actually one of the reasons why, I mean, the current facility is not meeting our needs as a community. But if we have, once we have the completed operations and maintenance facility, all this material and material will be inside and secured. But counsel, any questions about this? Councilmember Doby?
Well, I mean, is it time, I have quite a few.
Please. Yeah, good.
Okay, my first question about onsite security. So we're going to need to do that for the next four or five years based on timelines to build a new maintenance center. Is that correct?
We're only looking out 12 months at this point, but I think that's logical.
Okay, so this is really almost a million-dollar decision, not a $401,000 decision? Because the maintenance center is not going to be built for five years, whatever it is?
Well.
I mean, I'm just asking.
No, I know. Actually, say, $200,000 is the.
It's a one-time, and then you got security for five years, and the state law just costs us $1 million. I mean, if you really want to put it in what it cost us, other than the convenience of buying $213,000 worth of new equipment.
Yeah.
Okay. So my other question is, and this is maybe, I'm pre-talking before we get down to item C, but if we were to reallocate ARPA money, could we use that to replace this?
We can. I asked legal counsel about that earlier today.
Okay. Okay. Those are my questions.
Okay. Counsel, any other, Councilmember McDaniel?
Yeah, I actually have a couple of questions. I've looked at the timeline on this one, and first question is, do we have to buy all the equipment right now? Or can we buy as needed? Or is it like, we just need a, do we have to purchase all of it right now? It's the first question.
I'm sorry, I missed the beginning part of your question.
The $213,000 for the equipment, do we have to purchase all of it right now?
Yeah, so I mean, some of it has lead times, like the trailer. I mean, that's realistically, if I were to have staff order it tomorrow, we wouldn't see it till the end of January. But that means we have equipment sitting in the yard. We can't move until the end of January. So yes, there is, we don't have extras, we don't have spares. We've run this operation in both of our departments for many years as lean as we can, that there's not extra equipment sitting around.
Oh, I get that one. Just checking to see if it's seasonal, if we had to buy it all now, if it was, you know, broken or what.
Yeah, I mean, there's some very minor things that we might be able to put off till the spring, like the spare tires for the tractors, for example, would be one thing that comes to mind. Beyond that, we pretty much use all of this equipment on a weekly to daily basis year-round. So there's not, unfortunately, a lot of staggering that occurs.
Gotcha. My second question is actually more for, I don't know, the procedure. I can understand the replacement of the equipment. The onsite security is something I want to go deeper into a conversation with. So I'd like to know if we could have these split apart to have two different votes so that I can at least move forward with what I approve of, but then actually be able to vote my conscience if the answer's not what I like on the other part.
Yes, sir.
And I'll hold, tell, is that a possibility?
Could you say that again?
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm asking if it's possible to split this into having two votes, one for the equipment replacement and one on the onsite security.
I'll see here. Come on, a second. We could accomplish that. Legal counsel, is that fine?
Yeah, that's fine. You could also choose to amend it to remove a portion of the money if you only wanted to vote for one and see if you had support for that. That's another option, but we can accomplish that if you'd like.
I'd rather split, make it an even vote, an easy vote, yeah. And then with that said, I have questions on the security side of things. Should we address that now or afterwards?
I think it'll depend on, if I could go back, it'll depend on the motion that's made.
Okay.
So when the motion is made, you could always make it, to answer your question more completely.
Yeah.
Once the motion is made, and we normally have the committee chair of that area, you could make an amendment to, or make a motion during that time to cab that off. So that's how you can accomplish that, okay?
Okay.
So there'll be a motion to pass this, and then you can move to amend, and then see if there's four votes to amend, to have a separate vote for that.
I can make the motion too, just one.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll do that then. All right, council member?
At that point, I can ask my questions about that second part and get this one taken care of.
Yeah, but I think actually the council president's going to accommodate your request. All right.
I'll step off. I'll ask those questions after we split it.
Very good. Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. So we had security there, every night anyway, right? We had some type of security. We had cameras. We had.
We do have cameras, yes.
Was anyone watching the cameras?
Yes.
And could they see what was happening?
They called 911. They dispatched our officers, and as the mayor said, officers responded, did not see what was happening. They could not see them from where they were, and then backed off. Then they were called back, I believe, and still didn't see, and then contacted them, and as the mayor said, followed them and had to break off the pursuit.
Part of it is, I could, and I, part of it is, is that when the first officer arrived, there are multiple people in the yard. He had to call for backup. And so while they were, when he showed back up an hour later, when the officer showed back up, he was waiting for, calling for backup, because you don't want one officer to confront these individuals. But, and then by the time the backup arrived, then the confrontation ensued, and then they took off.
So they were in the yard for at least an hour?
Yes. Yes, almost two, we think. Hour and a half to two.
And they were on camera the whole time?
In and out of camera views, yes, pretty much.
So do you think that this was someone who'd been in the yard before, so they knew where this stuff that they took was located?
I don't know how to guess that. I think they were stealing everything. They were looking in every vehicle. They were random. They took everything. They took crazy things and very expensive things and things that are single-purpose use that only EJ's crew could have any use for, a tool to remove a manhole cover. It's not a tool that anybody else would need, but they just took everything.
Did these items have serial numbers on them so that if they show up, they, in a?
Many things did. Like the tools that EJ mentioned, that's inventoried with serial numbers.
And have we contacted pawn stores? Are we looking online to see if these things are being stolen or?
I believe police are following up in those directions.
Actually, Chief, can you come up and tell us the process for that?
But I want to go back to the, so we had existing security there, and now we want additional security. So what?
It was a police officer who responded in a car.
No, I mean, we had someone watching the cameras. We had someone calling it in because the alarms went off. So what were we paying for that as compared to what we could pay for having someone onsite?
I don't have the number of what our security camera system is off the top of my head. I can absolutely get you that by tomorrow morning.
Are we keeping both, then? So we would have both online security?
We've invested in the infrastructure for the camera system, and we're, it performed to a degree that night, to a good degree, and the officers responded in a very timely manner. They just didn't see them the first time, and then while, as the mayor just mentioned, as the officer waited for backup, that's when they crashed through the gate and they were, and I don't want to misspeak or overspeak for the chief. So the chief's here. He can probably give you a better law enforcement perspective.
First officer responded. Actually, three officers responded. They didn't see or hear anything. They left. They returned six minutes later because another alarm came through. At that time, when the officer arrived, he could hear banging. He called for a code one, which means need assistance. Multiple officers responded. While the other officers were arriving, that's when the suspects fled. And by state law, we did not pursue the vehicle. And I think you had another question?
Well, there was, there was an hour gap between the first time you showed up and then when we got called back.
Right, that's when the officer was dispatched. They went back six minutes later. But what happened is the call came in as an unwanted person. So there was a miscommunication between the person calling in and the call receiver. It was not received as a burglary in progress. I think they were under the impression it was some sort of open space, that there was some unwanted individual looking into vehicles. So it was not prioritized as a burglary in progress. Had it been prioritized as burglary in progress, it would have moved up on the dispatch center terms of priority list. So it wasn't as high on the priority list. But eventually, the field officers have no idea this is occurring. The dispatch isn't telling them anything. They don't know until they get dispatched. So they get dispatched, they go, the officer doesn't see or hear anything, they leave, they get another alert, so they go back six minutes later.
So my question was, are we watching online? And are we going into pawn stores to see if this equipment is being stolen, sold?
Yeah, it's signed to a very experienced detective. There's a system called Leads Online. All the information gets entered. If some pawning takes place, we'll get alerted. So we're actively working this case. We're not done with it. Obviously, the more time goes, you know, less chance of getting the stuff back. But we have not given up on this case. It is a priority case for us. We are actively working it.
The good news is no shots were fired, no one. I mean, it's very likely that they had weapons on them when they were in the yard stealing the stuff, so.
Yeah.
If I had it my way, middle of the night, it was like 1:30, we would have pursued this vehicle.
Yeah.
We would have gotten our stuff back.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. All right, council, any other questions?
Mayor?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Deputy Mayor, I have an answer for you. That cost on the monitoring system is about $1,000 a month that we currently have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Councilor Tran?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I'm sorry that this has happened to us, but I have so many concerns about this, because this is not the first time they hit us with this. I honestly lost count of how many times we lost our equipments and how much money we I mean, we... I wish we could do more to prevent something like this from happening. The other concern that I have is that with the law in place, our own police department can't even protect our own, right? Let alone, we protect the businesses or the resident in the city. So that's my most concern. The other thing that I want to ask is, I mean, if our officer couldn't prevent this from happening, if we hire a security company, what are they going to do? I mean, what can they do?
They will be onsite, in the yard, inside the yard, every evening, while we're not there.
Are they armed, or...
They're not armed there to call the... They call our law enforcement, but they would be an immediate deterrent when you have a person there saying, "Get out now. I've called the police." They're going to leave. They're not going to want to have that interaction, and the police would be there immediately. So armed... They're not armed, and... But they would call our police immediately.
And, okay, so I have a similar concern with Councilmember Dovi. We are... It's looked like we are going to invest almost a million dollars for this. And that is the big price tag to protect this place. I don't know. I mean, I have really mixed feeling about this thing.
Well, what's before the council right now, and I hear that, is, you know, what's before the council is one year. And we... In the meantime, we could figure out, you know, something else, but I think that we need to... We can't have this happen once a month. We need somebody there. So, did you have any other... Deputy Mayor?
So for almost $200,000 for onsite security, couldn't we hire our own staff person to... For less than that, to provide security there? Someone that might have a weapon on them, in case they needed it, to protect themselves?
Chief? Chief, I need you up here and engaged, please. The chief made a specific request not to use a law enforcement officer on this. You know, we only have a certain number of officers that are on duty at any particular time, and what we don't want to do is take an officer out of the field and out of a car and plant that person there. But, Chief, let's have a discussion about whether we should put an officer, or maybe two officers, there every night.
I don't think that's good use of our officers. I need them out on the field, responding to 911 calls. I don't want them stationary in a maintenance facility. That's not good use of a very experienced police officer, when we can use a security officer to do that. Same detail.
Okay. We've got, in the order that I saw them, Councilmember Dovi, Councilmember McDaniel, then the council president. Councilmember Dovi?
Couple more questions. I don't think we have any choice but to buy the hardware, the things that were lost. It's like, no-brainer, we have to do that. I'm not opposed to having a guard there, but I'm wondering if a guy or a gal, or whoever's walking around, or they're there, and the criminals come back, they're going to call the police. But what's the safety of the security guard if they're not armed? And are we going to supply safety for them to get into if six people show up, and it's one against six, and they're calling 911? I mean, what's the plan for the security guards?
Well, yeah.
I mean, I'm just at...
That's a good question.
Because, I mean, you could hire somebody, and they all mean good. They're going to be a security guy, and maybe they need to have a tack dog with them or something. But you have somebody on site 10 hours a night, in the rainy weather in winter, and six guys show up, or three, or one. I mean, how are we protecting them? I know we need to... I mean, we just heard how blatant criminals are, taking cars and, you know, running the police. So how are we going to set it up for safety?
Let me just ask more of a fundamental question here. Is it, when you've talked to them, is it one person per night or per shift? Is it two people?
One person, per shift.
Okay. So talk to us about your experience with these...
Our experience with them, thank you, Mayor, is excellent. We've worked with Pierce County Security for many, many years. Most of them are...
I'm not questioning their quality and how good they are. I'm more concerned about the bad guys being bad guys.
I know, but this, I think, will inform, because this is what they do.
Most are ex-military or ex-law enforcement. They're well-trained and well-prepared. They guard things all over the Northwest, and they have worked for us for many, many years. In fact, they work for us every single day of the week. I think they are provided training on how to stay safe. I don't think anybody's expecting this office, this security officer, to go one-on-one. He is in a issued car that's issued by Pierce County Security. We want him out of the car as much as possible. But I believe in the scenario that you just put forward, that person would get into their car and be as safe as they can, probably running, and get away from... If they were truly threatening them while they called the police, they would be able to have safe haven in their car and get away. That would be my take. Andy, do you have anything else to add?
If a security officer was being threatened, and that type of call, when somebody's literally being threatened, their life is in jeopardy, that priority in terms of when officers dispatched dramatically changes, versus just a property crime.
Well, let me say this, is if we didn't get approval to do this, we will just put a police officer there. Probably one, probably not one by himself. We'll probably have two officers there every night. That's what's going to happen. So if we don't pass it, I'll just put police there, because we're not going to let this happen again. Councilmember McDaniel?
Yeah, I was going to wait, but I'll just jump in now, since we're kind of talking about it. My big thing on the onsite security is, I read through the time logs, and the police were there in six minutes. So the phone call went out, the police were there within six minutes, and it was just, it seems like, a few miscommunications and some issues that were going on with the way it was coded. They didn't allow the... Didn't... The police officer didn't see the next level of, you know, burglary, to get out and actually inspect a little bit deeper. That inspection might have stopped everything, same as the security guard. It was the fact that it was an hour later that we're having this conversation, before the second phone call came out. And an hour of them literally on camera stealing pretty much everything we had, and they're breaking into everything. So the reason I'm not really big on the onsite security is, the police responded in a relatively great time. It was just some miscommunication, some SOP issues, that I think have surely been addressed and taken care of. So that if there's any phone calls or 911 calls to a city facility, I'm pretty damn sure that someone's going to get out of the car, they're going to check on it, and this kind of issue will not pop up. There is nothing that says that if we have security there, that that's not a liability for us of them getting shot. I mean, they are so blatant with the way they steal stuff nowadays, that you get on YouTube, you get on any of these websites, or stuff like that, you're going to see people walking in, ripping out cash registers, and leaving the store, with everybody around them videotaping it. They do not care, and they're armed. So that's my two cents on that one. I think that they were there fast enough. I just think there was some SOP items that have been addressed, and I don't think that particular issue, for $200,000, I think it's not for one year. It's going to be a couple of years. So that's my reasoning for wanting to pull it apart, is, I guess, I understand the equipment, the online security. Man, they were there. It's just a matter of an SOP issue that could be taken care of, and I don't think that will ever happen again.
Well, how many... Council President?
Oh, I was just going to suggest that I do know another company that this happened to them, and it was actually, just to suggest, it was actually a part-time employee who knew how... A former, that knew how the system worked, and came back in. And it was a while before the detectives could find out who it was. But one other thing, could we park just a plain vehicle, a police vehicle there that's not being used in the evening, so that we don't use our officer, but just an unused vehicle?
I'm not going to do that.
Not going to do that, okay.
If this doesn't pass, a police officer will be there every night.
No problem. Okay. I'm just trying to make suggestions. And, boy, if we ever pass anything to electrify the fences in our city, I think that would be a great idea, but thank you very much.
I'm just... I'm not going to... How much... How much, EJ and John, how many prior times have we been hit at that location? And can you estimate the dollar figures that we've lost at that location? Ballpark?
It's over a million. It's four to five times that I can think of easily in the last two to three years. This is by far the worst that in my entire time with the city, like, by several factors. But this is also nowhere near the first. So, and this is to the mayor's earlier point, this is part of the reason why we need to be able to get this stuff under roof, behind a locked door at night.
Councilman Dovi, and then the deputy mayor.
I guess I have a couple of other questions. Again, I am not opposed, in fact, I support putting the security there. I just want to make sure that we've done everything we can to make them as safe as possible, and we, you know, whatever we do. But, you know, we heard about the 7-Eleven story not too long ago, about putting the billiards up, and I'm assuming we're putting up new fencing? Is that part of this proposal? Are we putting up gates so somebody would wreck the front of the car not to be able to drive through? Because that location, they can get into the freeway side, but there's only really like a couple entrances. And what are we doing to harden the site?
So there's three gates out there right now.
But are we hardening them? Are we going to do something different? Is that part of this money request?
So the money that is in there replaces the damage that is done. So to the gate that was rammed, the northern gate, yes, we are hardening that gate. The gate that was not used, we did not put funding in there to replace basically not damaged property associated out here. This only addresses what was damaged to have a baseline conversation. But yes, to your point, the gate that was damaged, one of the gates we hardened previously. So the gate that was damaged, all of the fence that was damaged, yes, that is all proposed to be upgraded to the same standard of what we did previously.
That's part of the $213,000?
Correct.
Okay. And is there one more gate we should harden and do something with, so it doesn't become the next weak point?
So there's one more gate that's not hardened, that's not in here, because it did not sustain damage.
But, again, you know, you plug two doors, and you got a third one open, the heat's going out. Are we not thinking about what we should be doing?
No, actually, Councilman, that's a great suggestion. We're all over it. We'll take... We'll follow up.
I mean, if we're going to vote on money tonight, and we're going to do this, let's not come back and say, oh, by the way, we forgot about the third gate. We should have done something there.
Point taken.
Yeah. We got one chance to do it as best right as we can.
Deputy Mayor, and then Councilmember McDaniel?
Is the... Excuse me. Is the maintenance yard well lit at night? And would, if it's not, could that be done to deter crime?
So when we installed the camera system, we did have King County come out and change out every light in the yard, and put in... I'm drawing a blank on the name of them, but they're massive LED lights that are meant to light up stuff at night. So I... We are in a residential neighborhood, you know, there's an apartment complex to the south of us, and there's obviously houses across the street from us. So we can't turn it into daylight by our own city code. But it is more lit than pretty much any other business around here, yes.
You know, the only other thing I can say is that if there's any way we can get the new site built and operational, instead of four to five years or whatever it's going to be taking at this point, we really need... I mean, we've heard this over and over, that there's been theft there. I think last year, we gave you funding to increase the fencing, to do something with the fencing. I can't remember exactly what it was.
So I... That might be the camera system that alerted this time, might be. That's the last major upgrade we made out there, was changing out the lights and installing this camera system. That is what triggered the police response this time. We have certainly made other improvements out there. I'm not aware of a fencing improvement, other than where the car flew through 312th and ran into the building, and that was an insurance claim. But that addressed the one gate that Councilmember Dovi brought up earlier. But I'm not aware of fencing specifically beyond that.
I imagine, you know, we're all concerned with the money issue here, and it's just going to continue to drain money until we can get the new site built. And so as we wait to build that, even the cost of building it is going up higher and higher and higher. I think we just need to get it done as quickly as we can.
We're doing that.
I think the mayor's made it abundantly clear to me and my staff that this is priority one of getting this done as fast as possible. And I will go out on a ledge and say we will have it done in less than four to five years.
Yeah.
Substantially less.
Okay. Oh, Councilmember McDaniel?
Just follow-up questions. Dovi actually mentioned some of it. Is there any other... Since you guys have been broken multiple times, I'm not as aware of those, because in the past. What steps have we done to hardening? And other than the other gate that he mentioned, is there anything else you can think of, since we're opening this Pandora's box right now anyways? The fence, is there... And I'm actually curious, I actually talked to a council member from a different city, and he mentioned electrical fencing, because they do it in Tacoma. So is that actually off the table, or is that actually on the table? Is that... I don't know if it's legal.
Kent? All right, Brian?
Yeah, we just changed it. Yeah. It rolls downhill, doesn't it? When we changed our code to allow for electric fence in the CE zone, we also included and city facilities. So if the council wants to put electric fencing up at the O&M facility, you can... It's just a check. Code allows it.
I'm not against that.
Neither am I. That's great.
If I could add something, just to improve the police department's response to the maintenance center, we've had internal discussions. So the officers who work swing shift at nights, we've instructed they're all... The lieutenants and the officers are going to actually do a tour, go into the facility, look, so that when we do get a response or an alarm there, we're going to have a better response. Certainly, this incident has brought to our attention about how to best respond. And if every officer knows how that place is laid out, we'll respond better as a team. So that internal aspect's been taken care of with the command staff, just so you know.
I mean, six minutes was awesome when I saw that. That's the, I thought that was great.
Well, I think what we're going to do is, you know, I, I'm not convinced that we were, that we'll keep this. I think in the short term, at least in the next year, we need to have people out there. We need, we're going to harden the target, we're going to look and get cost estimates for the electrifying. We're going to do everything we can. We will reevaluate if we go a year and we don't have, if we are not hit again, perhaps we can do some things that are short of onsite. But we've got to get our arms around this. Council President.
Good, I was going to suggest the electrical fencing overtime. So councilmember McDaniel, do you still want to have two votes? Okay.
Councilmember Doby, you talked about ARPA funding for this.
Yeah, what I was going to propose, and I'm jumping ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
We have about 650,000 in the financial literacy coming up in the discussion. I'm going to move that we take 450,000 of that and move it to this project and only fund 150,000 of the project that we did la, last quarter. Which is kind of maybe not what everybody wants to do. But it's, this is like when I wanted to do fields and we had to do a new roof. I mean, this is the same project we're in, we can't do everything. And so I don't think we should be taking operating money from our budget. And this is one-time emergency money and that's what ARPA is for. Now, all those people that the human services said, hey, we were going to give you money for literacy are probably not going to be happy. But this is one of those things where we have to put the walls up and, and do it. But that was what my proposal is going to be. Fund the program we're already doing that Bill's pioneered and we heard that gentleman talk about. But take the rest of the money, tell everybody we're sorry, we can't do financial literacy and we're going to fix our maintenance yard.
Is it possible?
That's what my proposal is going to be. So just, so it's out there.
All right. Kent, does that, does that meet with loss approval?
Yeah, we can do that as part of the later agenda item.
Okay. All right. Very good. There we go. And Kent, you want, you want to separate it out? I mean, excuse me, Councilmember McDaniel.
We got it.
Okay, go ahead.
So, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the emergency procurement and authorization to repairing place vehicles and equipment at Steel Lake Maintenance Facility for the lost cost estimate in the amount of 213,793 dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion, a second for the, for the amount specified. Is there any discussion? Oh, Councilmember Sephardoson.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have my, my hands raised, my hand raised, but a lot of the, my comments were already discussed. So just go ahead and vote. But one thing I was going to ask chief was can we, because Mayor, you stated that you didn't want to take officers off the street. I wonder if we could use off-duty officers.
Well, we'd have to pay them overtime. An off-duty officer who's doing a duty like that would, would be on an overtime basis and would still be, it wouldn't be somebody that would be in that shift, but it would be a police officer armed and, and being paid an overtime rate.
Right, but at least it won't take officers off the street. Because I heard you state that, so that was going to be my comment.
That's probably actually, Councilmember Sephardoson, that's likely what would happen. We would likely not use, if this didn't pass for some reason, if the other, if the other thing didn't pass, we will have an officer there. We will likely do exactly as you're suggesting, make it an overtime opportunity for officers to sign up. And if we couldn't get any volunteers, then we would assign somebody to do it. But we will have, at least for the next year, we'll have somebody there. Okay. Any other, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. As for the next?
Okay, Mayor, now I, I move to approve the onsite security for the Steel Lake Maintenance Facility in the amount of 187,440 dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Governor Mayor?
So where was the funding going to come to pay for this? I'm sure you know that because you've.
The city, as the mayor said many times, has got fiscal resiliency. What we don't have is time left in the remaining portion of the year to do another budget amendment. However, our directors are still tabulating all of this stuff. I think we would be bringing something into the first budget amendment for 2025. We're still keeping track. ARPA is, is a perfectly viable solution. It's already in the budget. So we've, we've got some flexibility. What we need is time and, and they're still counting.
So there's funding available in the budget? And we don't necessarily need to use the ARPA money for this?
I don't have money for sure in the budget. We were going to, the, the year is not done. We haven't counted this as part of our most recent budget amendment. I'm going to have to roll this into 2025.
24.
Thank you.
You're, you're ahead of us.
I'm already thinking of the following budget. You bet I am.
So if I could chime in, Mayor, so this is obviously a priority. We will, we will, there will be money and we will make it happen. ARPA is an option. But to your question of is there money, yes, there is.
Yeah.
Sorry, Steve, but yes, there, there is money. Just the simple fact that it's a priority. If someone were to come in and say, hey, I want you to support this and that other project, it's, it's a priority question. And this is something that we can't just debate about doing or not. We have to do it.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Tran? And then Councilmember McDaniel, did you have a question?
I'm asking the mayor to comment about.
All right. Councilman Tran?
Thank you, Mayor. I personally don't think the benefits of having a private security guard there for the amount of almost 200,000 dollars. With the 200,000 dollars, we could fund 1.4 or 1.5 police officers. So for that reason, I am not in favor of approve this motion.
Councilmember Doby?
I actually think that the first thing we voted on, the 213,000 that buys the equipment and all that's the right number. But I think we're, we just talked about how we're going to harden the location and different things with fences and electricity and all that, which takes time. But I'm for the security, but I don't think the number's right. I think it's too low. It should be, and I, and I falling on Councilmember Tran, I, I agree with him. If we don't have to have the security there for a long period of time, we should be able to pull it out. But the money should be to authorize for security and hardening the location and maybe not so specific that it's for an off-duty security, which we definitely have to do now because we have to do something. But you get all these people together that are smarter than we are up here on the council. And they say, hey, we only need security for four months because we're buying X amount of fencing from somebody and we're electrifying and we're putting balliards up. I think you need some flexibility on the number, but I think it's at 187, it should be a quarter of a million dollars. You're too low. I think we have to have the money set aside to look at fencing, look at security, look at the whole project. They may come back and say, let's put up a cement block, stone building to put everything in and lock it at night like a vault. But I think we're, we're too focused on security in one year and not looking at the big picture, which is hardening the site, having security and giving some flexibility for the team to come back with what it really needs to look like.
Well, and there is, you know, if we would not, if we get four or five months into it, you know, four or five months into it and, and we don't have another crime, I could see scaling back and that's a decision we could make. And then if we, if it's not expended, that, that, see, that's where we have the budget flexibility is. We have unspent general fund revenue, you know.
And that becomes, you're, you're the leader of the city with your staff. So you would have to come back and report to us and say, hey, we did it for this. And we say, great, we saved money to give to somebody else. But I don't think we're authorizing enough for you all to do the job that you need to do.
So is that a, is that a motion to amend?
Yeah, I'd like to amend the security part and not make it just security people, but the whole piece and make it a quarter of a million dollars.
Okay, is there a second for that?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay. There's been a motion and second to, well, there's been a motion to amend and a second to that motion to amend the general allocation for safety that could include up, that could include safety, hardening of the target and, and other measures as, as necessary for 250,000 dollars. So I see.
Mayor, if I could, so there's, there's ongoing costs with that and then there's one-time costs with that. So if we could maybe distinguish that.
Well, it's just, but it's for the one-year period.
Okay, so one year.
I think, yeah, so with the one-year, 250,000 dollars.
Got it. And just a quick comment on the, the cost of the personnel. So this is for a 10-hour shift, if I'm not mistaken. So to Councilmember Tran, your point about it being a one and a half or one and a quarter police officer, that's, that's exactly right. That's basically what it is because it's the time, the labor, and they, I assume they bring a vehicle and other kinds of, of equipment to the job that we would hire them to do. So it's an all-encompassing cost for, for the job to be done. So you're absolutely right, that's how much it costs.
All right. Council President?
Can I make a friendly amendment to your amendment? Which basically says in an amount not to, up to 250,000, not to exceed, up to.
And not to exceed.
And not to exceed.
Second.
Okay. That's, that's accepted. We have Councilmember Walsh and the deputy mayor and Councilmember McDaniel, did you have another comment?
I'm not sure, we'll figure out when I get to me.
All right. Councilmember Walsh?
No, I, I think that, that with that, I mean, with that, that, that 250, I think that we need to obviously get security guards in there immediately. But then be focused on what we can do to, to take measures that we don't need the security guards to harden things. And so that should be a, a priority. I don't know, that, there's a chance that, that that's, might end up not be practical to harden it enough to not need it. But, but I suspect that, that it can be done with, with electric fencing, with, with.
Collards, yeah.
Something, I suspect that it, that it can be done. And, you know, maybe further cameras and monitoring and, and more secure monitoring, that change in SOP. And, and, but, but anyway, so those are, are my thoughts is that it should be with the idea that hopefully not need the security guards long-term.
Indefinitely.
Mayor, a point of order.
Yeah.
So we had a, we had a proposed friendly amendment from the council president to Councilmember Doby's motion, which was seconded originally by, as in Mr. Doby's original motion was seconded by Jack Walsh. In order, in order to not have a vote on the friendly amendment, both Mr. Doby and Mr. Walsh need to say yes to the, to the friendly amendment.
Yes.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
So have, we've had a number of break-ins before. We've talked about this numerous times. Have we ever had someone who is a specialist in security issues walk around the yard, tell us what we need to do to make the yard safer? If we're going to spend this kind of money, I think that we need to have someone who specializes in this, who can tell us where the money would be best spent. And if it's more cameras, it's more cameras. If it's more lights, it's more lights. If it's electrified fences, whatever it is. But I don't want to just leave it up to, well, let's do this or that and think that it works. I think we actually need to have an expert come in, tell us what we need to do. Do we need to have some kind of metal sheds that are, that you can't break into and lock equipment up temporarily? You know, place those around the yard if there's space. I'm sure there's other things that we can do that we're just not thinking of right now. But I, I really do think we need some expert eyes on this to help us spend this money to make sure that we're getting the best use of the money.
That's a great idea. We'll do exactly that. That's exactly what we're going to do. Councilmember McDaniel?
Thank God for upper money, I guess. I'm, I, I like how you threw that in there at the end there to make it a little cleaner. I'm, I still trust the police to be able to do it if they were the ones who were doing it. So even with, I want the hardening, but I'm, I'm still going to have to hold on my position. So I'm just going to hold off any comments and stuff and just vote.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Walsh?
Oh.
Okay. Now, as to the amendment to up to and including 250,000 dollars for security measures. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Jennifer?
Councilmember Sephardoson? I didn't hear you. Councilmember Sephardoson?
Yeah, yeah, I'm so sorry, Jennifer. I'm still thinking about the ARPA funds versus other sorts of funding. So I think.
The ARPA funds have not been decided yet.
Yeah, we haven't decided how to fund it.
I know, so, okay, aye.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Nay.
Councilmember Tran?
Nay.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember Doby?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Honda?
Aye.
Council President Kochmar?
Aye.
The motion, the motion passes five to two.
Okay. And now as to the main, now, now the main motion. All those in favor of the main motion to fund this package at 250,000 dollars? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Councilmember Sephardoson?
Aye.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Nay.
Councilmember Tran?
Nay.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember Doby?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Honda?
Aye.
Council President Kochmar?
Aye.
The motion passes five to two.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. And that's your committee right there. We will, we will talk tomorrow and we will get an expert involved. That's a great, that's a great suggestion, Council, Deputy Mayor, and we'll do exactly that.
So are we going to discuss how we're going to pay for this?
We will.
Okay.
Yeah.
I am see. All right.
Yep, okay. Okay. Let's see here. One sec. I think we've got, okay. The legislative agenda, 2024 legislative agenda presentation, Bill Vodino, policy advisor and Jim Hedrick, our state lobbyist. Jim, thank you for waiting patiently. And let's, the hour is getting late. It's 9:15. Let's, let's move as fast as we've. Talk fast, please.
We will.
Council, you should all receive, should have all received the packet that includes the proposed legislative agenda.
Mayor, council president.
And Bill, let me ask you, did you have, are there any handouts for the, for the crowd in regard to this PowerPoint? What?
No.
Okay.
So Mayor, Council President, Deputy Mayor, council members, we're here to, again, as we did two weeks ago, talk about the updated proposed legislative agenda. This will be divided into a few sections. First, Jim Hedrick's here to talk about, give us an overview of the upcoming legislative session. Then we'll go through the legislative priorities one time, one more time. And then we'll do a finalization of the legislative breakfast agenda and talk about a prospective date. So without any further ado, here's Jim Hedrick, one of our city federal way legislative lobbyists.
Mayor Farrell and Deputy Mayor Honda and Council President Kochmar and members of the federal way city council. Jim Hedrick, your state lobbyist. It's a great day to be in federal way. The session is going to adjourn or, or, excuse me, convening on January the 8th of, of 2024. It's a quick session. It's going to be 60 days, it's going to be two months. It's the supplemental year. So they passed their biennial budget last year and they'll be doing the supplemental this year. I did send the, the mayor a report today. The state revenue forecast came out. The state has found yet another about half million, half billion dollars, 559 million. I think it's up for the next biennium, 189 in the current biennium. By my back of the envelope calculation, they've got about 1.5 to 2 billion dollars in reserves. So if anybody tells you they have a budget crisis in Olympia, they do not. I think that we will be out in 60 days. I think the regular session will end on March 8th. There are five Washington state senators running for statewide office in 2024. First time in 20 years, we've got four statewide offices open. Governor and Attorney General and the Office of, of Insurance Commissioner and the Commissioner of Public Lands. Looking at issues, I want to talk real quickly about the Climate Commitment Act. That was passed two years ago. And if you recall, that we've got a cap and trade program in this state where you've got auctions going, occurring and buying credits for, to, for the right to pollute, if you will. This has had an effect on gasoline prices at the pump, just in case you hadn't noticed. And that will result in legislation this upcoming year. There will be legislation that will be transparency for the oil companies. There will be other amendments proposed to the Climate Commitment Act. But this is the, the governor's hallmark achievement in his, in his three terms. And I don't see them willfully passing a lot of amendments to his Climate Commitment Act other than probably some transparency for, for oil companies. We have talked a lot about police pursuits tonight and that is paramount on your minds, I know. There will be bills on allowing police vehicular pursuits for property crime and within that probably auto theft. Not necessarily optimistic about them making large changes in the police pursuit laws. But anything that will happen will be, as, as Chief Wong pointed out tonight, it will be in the, in the property crime realm. Every legislator I've talked to says that there will be a large behavioral health package, spending package. Transportation, I know you've got some projects on, on there that I've been familiar with. Transportation, they are running into cost overruns. The Washington State Department of Transportation just asked the legislature to, for some adjustments. The 520 project up at, up at Montlake, right by Husky Stadium there is 800 million dollars over, over budget. That's a billion-dollar project as, as they budgeted for it. It's 800 million over, over budget. That's just one project. So to make room for everything, the legislature will be asked to delay, reduce projects. And we've already got some of our projects pushed off into the future beyond the 27, 29 biennium as it is. Big package for police recruitment and retention that will be available to cities for, for, for those purposes. And on the affordable housing front, I know that you've had a lot of angst over the legislature seemingly usurping local control with, with the ADUs and with the density bills that have come out. I know that there will be a bill that centers around transportation-oriented development. That will probably amend the Growth Management Act, probably usurp local authority. And we will be pushing back on that, as will AWC, as will cities. I'm, I'm listening to the discussion tonight and on the police vehicular pursuits and on, on, on growth management and affordable housing, very much in line with, with what I'm hearing in other, in other cities as well. So just want you to know that you're, you're not alone in your, in your frustration, especially on the, on the police pursuits. We're supposed to adjourn on March 8th. Like I said, I think that'll happen. So it's two months, it will happen quickly. And I'm happy to take any questions at this time. to take any questions at this time.
Any questions on that? We do have the legislative agenda. Why don't we go, why don't we do that? Why don't we go through the proposed legislative agenda and then go from there? Uh, thank you, Jim.
Okay. As you all have in your packets, this is the executive summary on one side and then the detail on the other side. We'll have copies for the group once we're all done. So basically, as we, as we march through this, Thomas, we seem to be frozen.
Hey, Bill, can you put the mic up by your mouth?
Sure. A little bit taller than I used to be. So, okay. So there's, there's, there's the document. Basically, public safety, number one, reinstate police pursuits for car theft and other property. As we talked about, talking about a proviso for research, we're going to go full, full in with our legislators and we will compile as the city present city, county, regional, state and national data on frequency impacts of car theft and the number of crimes committed using car theft. So we're, we're committing to that and that will be part of our portfolio. And we've looked at this data before. This whole meeting has been sort of an embodiment of what this legislative agenda is all about with what's happened with our police force in our, in our city. And so these are the, this is the statistics that we'll continue, continue to push and add to in those reports. But as vehicle theft has almost doubled in the federal way, we've, we've seen a 58% increase in auto theft from 2021 to 2022. So those are huge numbers that we're going to just advocate about. So, and of course, we talked about tonight stealing a car is a precursor to a crime, all these other crimes we've talked about tonight, and giving criminals anonymity. And we will continue to pursue that and put that in front of them in this kind of thing. So the bottom line is this law needs to be reversed. It's too restrictive and the big underlying criminal should not have more protection than the victims. And that's what we're going to go with, even though it's just, at this point, they're saying, well, they're not going to listen to us. We're going to do it. So in addition, after we met as council members was to help King County advocate for another guardian, one helicopter. So there are the details. It's, it's another eye in the sky. And so we've got that in our agenda as well, too, because it's, it's part of our force. It's part of the county's force. So transportation, I was asked to illustrate in the agenda in other ways what we've got, but basically the traffic circle request we've talked about. And basically, since it's a state, it's a state project, we basically need the state to take, take responsibility for the funding, even though we've moved forward and taken action on it. Next on City Act Center Access Project, we have detail on that. And of course, we're going to continue to advocate 50 million for that. For the South 336, 340th corridor, there's a map of what we're trying to do there. And of course, we'll continue to advocate for that because that will ease all the traffic that's running to I-5 from Tacoma. And we've got other legislatures, legislators in those other districts who will help us. And then, of course, please reprioritize the triangle project. And there is, we know what's been done. And now there in those two circles is what we, what we hope to have happen in the future. The capital budget request is for turf ball fields at Celebration Park. The new detail is while we've received $822,000 from the Department of Commerce, another 1.5 million will help us completely do two, two fields. So that's what we'll be asking for with your approval. And then, of course, to these other situations that it sounds like the other cities and other business organizations are backing, retaining local control with what's going on with, as we plan for growth. And of course, condominium liability reform, we've gone through that before and talked about it. And we want to figure out a way to take care of that as well, too. And then other initiatives, behavioral mental health and addiction resources. So there's not a price tag there yet. It's something that we want to continue to advocate for. We're looking at some numbers that we can propose to you later, but for EV chargers, electrical vehicles, city facility upgrades, as there is money there, that if there's money there, we might as well try to obtain money for that. And then one council member said we should advocate as they continue to talk about solar programs for net zero for residential, commercial and government, government buildings. So that's the agenda. This will be presented at the legislative breakfast. The sixth did not work for two out of three of our legislators. We should have a, a date and a time for you by noon tomorrow, because they are aggressively trying to figure out what works with their schedule. There's like six or seven dates. We'll check with your schedule. And so we will get this in, in December. We will have a date that you can all agree to and they will appear. They want to appear. And basically, the agenda would be number one, I think we should present first. And we divided it up by council. Then they could maybe respond about what they see as the priorities. I think it was reversed in other years. And then basically the Q and A to talk about why were things done in the past, what is going on in the future, and how do you respond to our legislative agenda? So that's what we're looking at there. So at this point, any, our options are to today to approve the agenda or approve it with modifications or do not approve. Mayor's recommendation is to approve. And discussion, questions, anything with the agenda, anything with the legislative breakfast.
Council President, do you have a question? Okay. Councilmember Walsh and then Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, just one thing. I, I think that the, in the, it, do you want to go back a couple of slides? Keep going back, other initiatives?
Yes.
You know, I mean, it's kind of behavioral, mental health and addiction resources. It's kind of, these other initiatives are kind of put in as, it seems as an afterthought. And I think that this one here, behavioral, mental health and addiction resources really is a, a public safety issue. And I would propose that we put it up to the top after the pursuit one, which is definitely the most important, but then have, have it up after that with some verbiage similar to this. Public safety in federal way and throughout the state is increasingly being impacted by a shortage of mental health and addiction resources available to serve the chronically transient population.
Without a vote, council, is there any opposition to that? I mean, it's just a re, kind of rearranging. Is there consensus?
Yeah.
Great. Okay.
And add language.
It's a great suggestion.
And then going on, when such individuals are involved with retail theft, drug sales or possession, violent crime or, or a danger to themselves, courts and social service agencies should have such programs as tools to provide an opportunity to change lives. Funding for treatment beds is needed.
Okay.
Councilmember, maybe you could send that to Bill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll just take it off to YouTube, but you can send it to me, too, please.
All right.
Deputy Mayor and then Councilmember McDaniel?
Thank you. I have a question. Does our police department send in their own legislative agenda?
No.
No.
So when I was in my small meeting with, with Bill and two other council members,
I brought up juveniles and the fact that we're having crime committed by juveniles and the difficulty police are having with, with that. And our police department has asked us to put that on our legislative agenda, and I think that we should. The ask is from the, from Chief Wong's presentation today, the ask is to amend the law to allow a parent or guardian to provide consent for juvenile, juvenile to be interviewed by law enforcement to include consent to search property and/or allow the juvenile to consent after consulting with an attorney. I would also say a parent or guardian, but I think that's important. I, watching the news, listening to other police chiefs around the, the region, a lot of them are talking about the juveniles stealing the, the vehicles and, um, at some point, this needs to be looked at. And I, I think that other cities are going to be asking for this. So I-
You bet. And I-
Under public safety.
I, I would say, first of all, I'm, there's something I'm going to do in just a moment, but there are oftentimes many issues that we support and we testify on that actually aren't in our legislative agenda. However, but I, I, I think that's a great idea. Is there any opposition or is there a consensus to the addition of that? Okay. Let's make sure that gets added to the legislative agenda as, as set forth. Councilmember?
Just real quick, there are other cities that are going to ask for that very specific thing. And there are law enforcement advocacies that, that, that will be asking for that, like walk hops. We'll be asking for that as well.
Okay. All right. And we'll make sure that gets added to the agenda, seeing how we have consensus. And, and Bill, when we get the final draft done with, I know that we've had our graphic artist work on this.
Yeah.
Once we get that added and added in, make sure council gets a copy of the completed agenda.
Yeah.
Any other, Councilmember McDaniel?
If you can go back one to the additional, so the extras, right, what was it?
Yeah.
Right there. Yeah. If you could just make one small change, the advocate for net zero, can you remove solar impaired building initiatives? So solar, solar programs take out impaired building incentives?
And net zero building incentives. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we've got, we've got Councilmember Sephardosson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Considering that we just had the conversation around the maintenance facility, I wonder if there's something we can add to this for our request to either expedite our search for a location, whatever we need to do next. Maybe requesting for funds for that property would be great. Adding to the, to what, to the list that we already have is what I'm saying.
Um, let's see here. Um, well, I'm not sure that we can ask, I mean, Jim, you've been, actually, Jim worked at revenue. He worked at OMB, Office of Budget, worked in the governor's office, worked, actually, Jim and I started in the same day in Olympia 34 years ago. Jim?
Sir?
What's that?
No.
No. Thirty-four years ago, he and I started working in Olympia together. Same, same day. So the question by a council member is, should we ask for money to try to recoup the losses from this, this theft? I mean, is that?
Yeah, I, I, I think you could do that as long as, I mean, quite frankly, that the city has shown that they have a share of the money as well, or you've got it from your insurance, or however that would work. I think the, you would have to show the state that the city put in some money as well.
It, we're self insured. That's a complete loss.
You're self insured. Okay. Well, I, then that's, that's, if, if the city's going to put in, then I, then I mean, yeah, then I'd be comfortable with going in and asking for the state like a local community project from the Department of Commerce.
Very good. Okay.
We can do that.
Okay. Any objection? Thank you, Councilmember Sephardosson.
Thank you.
Any objection to?
Yeah. With, with that, I, I think it's a great idea, except I think that the chance of it going anywhere is slim. And are we diluting by having too many things in the legislative agenda? Are we diluting, however worthy that and sensible that would be? I mean, the state ought to be doing something about a problem that they basically created. But are we diluting things too much as we add more things?
I, I would say no more than two asks and put it in the $500,000 to a million dollar range on capital. Would be my recommendation.
Well, we can-
It's the supplemental year.
Yeah. Well, Councilmember Dovi?
Maybe on top of that idea, I think an, an ask right now with a 60-day session's probably not the way to go. But we, you might want to ask for parts of the maintenance facility like we did for the Performing Arts Center. And, you know, because that's buy-in for all the citizens, you know, all the road repair, all the things that we do.
Okay.
You know, I wouldn't do it this time, but in 2020, whatever, five or six or next, as we get, might be an ask that we have.
Deputy Mayor?
Shouldn't we do it this time just to introduce it and so that they have it on their minds for next year? I mean, they can always say-
They can always say no, but I-
But if they have it on, if they know that we've introduced it this year, we can build the case for it over the year and hopefully '25, they, they would fund it.
It doesn't hurt to ask, but I think the number one priority is police pursuit.
Right.
You know, even if we got no money whatsoever and we got that, that's the biggest win for everybody in our city and the state.
From a capital viewpoint, we-
But anyway.
From a capital viewpoint, you know, we, the 373rd and Pacific Highway, you know, we, we were able to get half that money, half that money from a PSRC, Puget Sound, what is it?
Regional council.
Regional, yeah. Regional, we, we got half of that money. The other half is coming out of our pocket. We're asking for a million dollars from the state because it is a state road, because we've had at least six or seven people die on that road. So from, if we're going to ask for a million dollars, if I'm going to go walk into a, or ask Jim to walk into a room with legislators and senators, that's the first money I'm asking for. Because that's a state road, because we've had people die on that road, because we had to close off left-hand turn lanes on that road. That's where we're going to go for first. Just, just to, I mean, that, that makes the most sense. And then I think we've got those other transportation asks. We also don't have, I mean, if the, right now, we haven't, we haven't incurred the $500,000. This is, I don't know. I, I, I don't think it's really thought, I don't think it's really well thought out at this stage. And we don't want to just throw something out there. We, you know, this is, we spend a lot of time creating a document. I don't think we should just-
So then what Councilmember Sephardosson just asked for, then we're not going to ask for?
Well, I mean, it, it's up to you.
No, I'm, no, I'm just asking. That's, I thought we said we liked that and now we're changing our mind, which is okay.
I'm just, we have to think about what, how this is going to play in Olympia. I mean, in my, I mean, honestly. I mean-
I wouldn't ask for it.
Right. We're self insured. We lost. We, we lost the money. And I, I don't, I mean, it doesn't feel right to ask Olympia to, I mean, but, but you guys get the vote. I don't get the vote.
Maybe we'll be better prepared in a year to ask.
Yeah, maybe, maybe. Council President?
Jim, can we do a separate request to the Department of Commerce to be reimbursed for the loss that we incurred?
Um, there is no program to do that specific request.
Yeah. You know, this is, yeah, I think I've said enough. Okay. Um, you know, she's raised the, Councilmember Sephardosson has raised the issue. It's something to keep our eye on. It doesn't necessarily have to be in the legislative agenda. I think actually the bigger issue is whether we should try to get some funding for what's going to go there, which is the operation of maintenance facility. But I, I just want to be, I want to be intellectually honest with the council about how we're going to conduct ourselves in Olympia with our, with our legislative delegation. And I, I don't see asking for this. This, we, we, by running a city, we assume the risk of this loss and, and we've suffered it. So, um, okay. Any other comments or suggestions?
Do you want to ask? Councilmembers, I don't see if she, her hands up or not, if she has anything else to say.
Councilmember Sephardosson, do you have anything else to say on the matter?
No. I, one of the reasons I brought it up is we're talking about police pursuit and what was raised earlier by the chief was the fact that they could not pursue. So I think it's a prime example as to the damage that was caused based on that legisla, legislation. So I think it's just a way of, if, even if we're not asking for money, I think it should be brought up somehow in our discussion.
Oh, I, I plan, I plan to testify about-
To bring it.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, yeah, go ahead. So I think, I think, I find that to be very important and very telling of what's going on in our, in our, in our state. So if we're not asking for money, at least using it as a loss that could have been prevented, it's a good way to introduce the idea. So thank you.
Agreed. Point well taken. Thank you. We'll do exactly that. All right.
So Mayor, I move to approve the 2024 legislative agenda.
A second.
It's been a motion. A second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Matter passed unanimously. All right. Item C, ARPA grants for financial literacy and workforce development. Sarah Bridford, come on up.
Good evening. I'm going to pull up my presentation.
Linda, do you need a break?
No.
Okay. While you're getting prepared, council, we've been at this for three hours. If anybody needs a five-minute break, you need five?
Yeah, we'll wait for five.
Uh, we, we will break for five minutes. We'll be in recess for that purpose. It's okay.
Hey, if you go testify in Olympia, take me.
We'll do, yes. They want to talk about 9A, the comprehensive plan amendments.
But, okay, we, we need to vote to extend the meeting.
Okay. I'll call the meeting back to order. Is there a motion to extend the meeting past 10:00 PM?
I move to make, to extend the meeting past 10:00.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to extend the meeting past 10:00 PM, per council rule, so is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, we're in business. So, we're here for item C. Evening, Sarah. All right, the floor is yours.
Okay. Good evening, there are feral members of the council. This evening, I will be presenting recommendations for the ARPA grants for financial literacy and workforce development. The policy question before you is, should city council approve the proposed financial literacy and workforce development ARPA grant award recommendations? Just a reminder of city grant processes, we do have two ongoing or regular grant processes, one of which is the Human Services General Fund, which is just under $712,000 per year, along with our C2BG, which is federal funding and represents just under $800,000 per year. So within our funding, we have three strategies. One is to address basic needs, including housing, health, and hunger, promote individual and community safety through prevention, intervention, and crisis services, and for our third, promote services that foster stability and self-sufficiency for families and individuals. So this is the one that is at play this evening, as we talk about services that are intended to reduce poverty and help federal way residents increase their financial stability. It has the added benefit of reducing that service requirement in the future. All of our services and grants do fund families that are lower moderate income, prioritizing those that are least likely to have access to other sources. So this is the plan that had been approved by city council in November of 2022, which did commit funds to social service grants. Again, following the city's three priorities, the council adopted three priorities for our social service grant funding. You can see a lot of them are underway, and the final set of recommendations is coming before you for the financial literacy and workforce development. We have run a total of three RFP processes, two which are completed, and then this third one this evening, and I apologize, but my nose is burning and I need a tissue. Nothing like a breaking ice.
Oh, here, here we go.
One is the fish. Good way to break the ice. So, we had our three RFPs, and this is the, the final one, again, focusing on that poverty reduction for residents of the city. These programs do a variety of different things, and we'll talk through the recommendations from the Human Services Commission, where you'll get to hear about the breadth of services that can be represented in financial literacy and workforce development. Some of that is education and information that's provided. Additionally, it can be credit repair, debt reduction, asset building, bank access, better financial products, so looking at predatory lending, how individuals can have access to lower interest rates, that many of us do, but often not when you're in that lower income or have credit issues, so these programs all kind of lead to that. And then the workforce development is that career pathway and that ability to increase income as well. So, the applications that we received for financial literacy and workforce development are all through 2026. The application period opened this fall, we received a total of eleven completed applications requesting just over $3 million. Each commissioner has read and evaluated all the applications. We appreciate our Human Services Commission for the, the effort, as well as our applicants for taking the time to compile those applications. It's not a small undertaking, we, as stewards of public funds, do request a lot of information, both at the agency and programmatic level. So with that, the Human Services Commission has recommended four programs. They're primarily in workforce development, with one in financial literacy and one that's a hybrid. The Casa Latina is a job readiness training for domestic work and workshops on general job skills, negotiation, financial literacy, and licensing. English as a second language classes are also offered, along with digital literacy. Prorated based on the recommendation of the commission, the expansion would serve about 100 persons over three years with increased financial stability and preparedness for the job market. El Centro de la Raza is recommended for $150,000, it would serve about 100 persons, prorated based on that recommendation. They provide financial skills for economic self-sufficiency through reduced debt, improved credit, and increased savings. The program offers group workshops, one-on-one financial coaching, including personalized reviews of credit reports and lending circles. Eighty-five percent of clients will improve their financial literacy with knowledge about credit, improved access to capital, and direct connections with financial institutions. Fusion will offer the Poverty Day Cafe jobs training program, they're recommended for $175,000, that would serve 60 individuals over the course of those three years. This program does not replace cafe employees, instead it provides a job training program for youth and young adults that covers life skills, job skills, and post-training placement and support. Part of the program would place youth in the program alongside cafe staff, so there is a partnership there, but it is, again, not replacing the cafe staff. Ninety-five percent of the participants would complete the program and engage in that job search with job placement following. And then the YWCA Economic Empowerment is a hybrid program for financial literacy and career navigation. Career navigation is focused on individualized reemployment strategies, job placement, and career advancement. Additionally, the program would provide financial education and coaching, including money mechanics, financial education classes, followed by one-on-one coaching. With this program, 70% of residents in the career navigation services will obtain a job or transition to stable and sustainable employment, and 70% would achieve one of their financial goals. Ninety federal way residents would benefit over that three-year period. What we know is that our lower-income households are more likely to experience that predatory lending, higher interest rates, not having a bank account at all. These programs help to address that, as well as providing the education and those pathways out of poverty. At the committee, the item was passed with the Human Services Commission recommendation, however, there was a lot of discussion, and I believe there might be additional intent. There were two additional recommendations that were included at the, at the committee discussion. The first was the Human Services Commission with 350 federal way residents to be served, and alternate was funding Casa Latina, Fusion, the YWCA, and then continuing the city's financial workshops at 100,000, leaving $50,000 unallocated, and that alternate option would not fund El Centro de la Raza. And then another option was continuing the funding for Casa Latina, Fusion, the YWCA, and then splitting the remaining 150,000 between El Centro de la Raza and financial literacy workshops. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Dobie?
Yeah, I'm just gonna make a motion before we have discussion, because I kind of told everybody what I thought we would do. I really appreciate all the work that Sarah and her team have done on this, but with the need to purchase the equipment and the security that we passed earlier, I'm gonna make a motion that we allocate out of this ARPA money $450,000 towards the replacement of the tools and the security, that comes out, I think it's two, 450 is the number, and use the other 200,000, 100,000 going to, or the current program that we're running with Financial Peace, and then adding the Washington State Credit Union that wants to be a part of it, and leave the other 50,000 unallocated to see if we can use it for financial literacy in another way.
Is there a second?
So that's my motion.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and a second is set forth by the council member, is there any discussion? Councilmember McDaniel?
So on that one, I mean, I like the idea of taking some of the money, the amounts, what I, I have an issue with, so I guess we'll just discuss it after the vote.
Okay, great. Councilmember Walsh?
Yeah, I, I would, I would like to say, if this does carry, I, having served on the Human Services Commission, if, if we go this other direction, I certainly do not want it to, the Human Services Commission to think it reflects poorly on the hard work that they do, because they, I've, I've been there, they put a lot of hours into it, I think it's the hardest-serving commission. And, and, you know, obviously, there's, there's circumstances that are very unexpected right now.
Right.
And so, anyway, so, so I don't want it to reflect ill upon the, the hard work of the Human Services Commission.
Councilmember Dobie?
Yeah, I, I should, I'll make one comment, I, I did my numbers in my head wrong, it's 450, I would like to amend it, 450,000 towards, we call it the security and the buying of the new tools and that, and then 200,000 set aside for financial literature, literally 100,000 going to the current system we have now, and 100,000 to be allocated as Sarah's group and human services decides to use it. Comes up to a total of 650, which is the number that we're talking about in ARPA funds.
Jennifer, do you have all that?
Yes.
And, and I will.
And, and I will, and I will, with his change, I will second that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember McDaniel.
Actually, I do have a question. What are the odds of us ever having this opportunity to fund any of these programs, really, again? I mean, ARPA's never come around before, and hopefully God, it never comes around again in this scenario. But realistically, we've been told that they do have funding, or they'll find funding in the city. So, like I said, my big thing is, I like the Casa Latina, and I like the the YWCA and the city one, so I have a hard time, that much money. I'd almost want to split it more and do more out of the city's pocket, and have them eat it up a little bit more, and then take a little less from here and try to fund at least one or two more of these projects, because I don't think this is gonna happen again to have this opportunity, really.
Let's ask Steve, how, you know, we've got now a hole in the budget, you know, with our, say we didn't use ARPA funds. How would you go about finding 250 plus 213, what is that, 660, 663? No, excuse me, not 60, excuse me, 4, God darn it.
Sure.
Hold on. No, it was 250 plus 213. Yeah, 260, 463. How would you go about finding 463?
We already sort of did this exercise when we brought the most recent budget amendment, and we projected the revenue as best we could, and we green-lighted things like jail cost. Can I tell you at the end of the year that we're gonna have savings? We're almost through November, we still have December left. We think that we forecasted as optimistic as we could, and so I think that what we were gonna, what we're gonna end up is a year that's pretty tight, and we may end up having to come back in, at the first quarter and the next budget amendment if we don't use ARPA. That's, it would just cut into our fund balance.
And don't we normally use the fund balance at a later time for programs that we were not able to fund in the first budget, whether it's...
That's exactly right. That's exactly right.
So, it's gotta come out of our pocket for us.
Right. And, and the team that that we, that we heard from earlier, they're still taking inventory, they're still counting the cost, and so it's, and we also don't know that there's, you know, that there's some involvement with SWIM, it could be Fleet, it could be general fund, so it's, it's, I'm feeling premature on a couple of fronts, knowing where, which, which funds we have in need, or whether it's gonna be general fund, and it's not the end of the year yet. The city is fiscally resilient, we will figure out a way.
If we had to.
I'm sorry?
If we had to.
Right, right. ARPA is appropriated, it's in the budget, there, there would be no adjustment if we use ARPA.
Okay. Okay, and Kent, this is perfectly legal?
Yes, sir.
All right. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. So I'd like to know, with the programs and things that we've already funded ARPA with, how much has been spent and how much hasn't been spent in some of those programs, and do we have any other ARPA funding that we're not expecting to use?
Could you repeat the question for Steve Green?
So I'd like to know how much other ARPA funding is available that we might not have spent as much as we expected to with whatever it was appropriated for.
Sure, I understand the question. Of the total 19.2 million that we got in 2021, we've been tracking how it's been spent, and there are, there's still quite a bit that isn't spent. However, that, for example, we ordered 28 police cars, we still have five left to take deliveries, so we haven't gotten invoiced for those. Every single line has been obligated, staff is working on it. The last pieces that are undecided, if you will, are this, out of Sarah's budget, and then the economic development pieces, which, which you've been having discussions with, with Tanya Carter. So everything is, is really obligated, staff is rolling, and we expect to fully spend.
So one of the programs we used ARPA money on was a incentive to stay employed here at the City of Federal Way. How much money might we have left in that for folks who have left this city?
So let me, if I could just chime in on here, so we, we don't know the leftovers, I think is what you're getting at, until all of the items that you have approved have been spent, and to Steve's point, we're in the process of spending those as, as they happen. So once the cop cars are delivered, those will be, those will be spent. The retention incentive that you're talking about, we won't know that until, it's, it's the first paycheck in January, so we won't know that until January. So there's things, as they happen, we'll know more what is unspent.
Well, I...
It's up to the council whether or not they want to rearrange the unspent portion to other things, but we, we don't have those numbers yet.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Council President.
Can you, Sarah, can you put that back up the matrix with the option one, option two? So my problem is, I, you know, the jobs program for the Fusion job training program, I think that that's very, very valuable for, I always said that if you're gonna have people who need help, they need to be in a jobs training program or apprenticeship program, and I'm very hesitant to lose that ability. So I'm, I'm just wondering, so the, we, 463,000 is what we need for the ARPA, for the expenditures for Still Lake. So I'm, so, Councilmember Dovey, I'm wondering if we couldn't re, rediscuss your options and not do what you're planning, but maybe revisit that whole, in other words, you know, if you need to split the baby, you know, I'm just wondering how we can...
Well, the way that I would approach it is, we had this same discussion the other day about the roof on our building needed to be repaired. We had a million dollars set aside to do something we wanted to do, which was fields, and our staff came to us and said, hey, you know, we gotta fix the roof, we gotta do this, we gotta do that. And as a council, we made the decision that our house was more important than the fields, and therefore, we still don't have them, although we had set money aside for that. If we have money left over in January, we can always allocate it, I think, to these organizations. But today, I believe our number one priority as a council is to repair and get the tools back to our maintenance and parks, harden our sites so we don't get stolen again, and make it so people don't steal our stuff. Now, we can have more money, Steve could come to us in December and say, hey, by the way, we got this, or in January. That doesn't mean we can't fund these programs. We can, as a council, make that decision. But today, it's, I don't believe it's the best and highest use of our money.
So I'm simply...
But you can disagree with me, and I don't have a problem.
No, no, I'm simply talking about the fact that you want 100,000 for, preserved for the financial literacy program and 50,000 unallocated.
Well, no, there's 200,000 unallocated, 100,000, well, 100,000, because there's 100,000 for the program we already have, which was very successful and will run all through the year with volunteers and teaching financial literacy. We had a gentleman come in here unbeknownst to us and told us how it changed his life. I mean, and other people on our council have been there. I think it's a great program. You have 100,000, the 50 that was unallocated, and 50 that we're not spending, and you could take that 100 and say, let's put it to Fusion, put it to the YWCA. I think they're all great programs. I just don't think they're the highest and best use of our dollars today for our tax payers. That's the only, that's why I made my motion. I'm not against them at all. I was the one who brought up financial literacy in this council in the very beginning of last year with Jack Walsh, so I'm a strong proponent of it. I just don't think it's where we should spend our money today in November.
I'm wondering if, Seth Dawson has...
Oh, Councilmember Seth Dawson, did you have a comment?
Yes, I did. Question for you, Mayor, if we're self-insured, does that mean we're gonna get money paid for those damages and, and stolen goods?
No, it comes out of our pocket. It comes out of our pocket. All of this comes out of our pocket.
So if that's the case, and if the council decides to take money from the financial literacy, then I would rather see it go to the organizations and not all of it go to the financial literacy workshop, the Financial Peace University, because as someone who does do financial literacy, this program, yes, it's good, and I did attend, does not meet the needs of the population that we do want to serve. And so I would propose that it goes to another organization, and that to do, you know, there's, there's things that are not covered in the financial university, such as banking, and there are a lot of people who are either unbanked or underbanked, who do spend a lot of money by going to payday loans or other sort, or other resources that do harm them more than benefit them, and/or they're exposed to predatory lending, which are high interest, and people just are not aware of these pitfalls, and they're spiraling downward. And so I would recommend that we do fund one of these other programs that do provide those type of financial literacy, which Financial Peace University does not cover. And so if we go that route, then I'd like to see it go to an organization, and then we can come back to the financial literacy, Financial Peace University at another time if there's money.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember.
So I'm just wondering if we couldn't hold off on this discussion until we know better at the end of the year, probably by February, where we are financially with regard to what's coming out of our pocket for the Still Lake maintenance.
Are you talking about holding off on all of this, this application?
Yeah, holding off a decision on this until we know what monies we really will need.
Okay, that's, that's one suggestion. So there's a, Council, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to know what this city did, what it did cost to hold the financial literacy workshops that was just held? What did that cost?
Bill? Did you hear the question? Did you hear the question?
I believe it was under 20,000, was it not?
So 20,000, there were 19 people in?
It was budgeted for 20,000.
I think 20,000 was budgeted, but that was not, how much was spent?
How much was spent?
We had, we had less, we had 23 people attend. Basically, it's sitting around 12,000, but that's not with a full complement. If we had a full complement, we probably would have maybe saved some, but been it at 17 or 18.
But you spent 12.
Spent 12, but on, on 23 people, not on the 40 that we budgeted for. We feel that the next session would be 40, and so it would be closer to what we were talking about.
Which is 20.
Which is 20, but, you know, maybe 18, but, you know, we're always trying to save money. But yes, closer to what we budgeted.
So I, thank you very much. So I, I'm wondering why we would, I think the proposal is to put 100,000 in there?
That's for the whole year, for two organizations. Credit Union, Washington State Employee Credit Union wants to sponsor one, do it four times a year, and the volunteers that are doing it now have it, want to do it for four times a year. So it's a total of eight classes at 20, it's 160 people.
Perhaps.
That's, that's what the 100,000 comes to, is, and we're not paying any, well, we got our staff time, Bill's time, and things like that, but it's really, for one year, eight classes, roughly 160, what is it, Bill? Eight times 40, that's two, go through my brain, what is that, 260?
So why would we need to, if the credit, a credit union wants to sponsor four classes, why would we need to put any funding into that if they're gonna sponsor it?
Actually, the, most of our expenses, because we have volunteers, is facilities and materials, and then the hospitality. So like the community center is probably, I mean, I'm probably 8, 9,000 out of the 20. So a lot of it is just bringing them in. The credit union is basically, as with the Ramsey folks, they're basically volunteering their time.
Yeah, we rented the community center, so we paid our, we paid the community center for the space. We had babysitting, so people could actually come and have their children. I mean, so those expenses are there to encourage more people to come.
And I think it was a wonderful thing to do, but I also think we need to think of the population we have in federal way, that, that doesn't fit everyone's need for financial literacy, and...
Well, I think that, I don't want to interrupt you, but I would ask Paul McDaniel to say, what was the makeup of that class? He went there, it was, it was very, very diverse, was it not?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, to be honest, if you look at the groups we're looking at here, I do know people say they're gonna be, you know, the big word diverse, but it was everything. You name it, you had them there. It didn't, we had, we had a 14-year-old kid, we had people in their 60s there, every walker of life for the most part. Everybody had, you know, different backgrounds. I mean, there is some stuff, like they said, that they do not go into, but for the actual grouping of people came out there, it was probably the most mixed bag of people I've ever had. And even afterwards, the best part of the whole group was the small groups. We got together the Thursday after we were done with it at a person's house, and over 80%, maybe 85% of the participants showed up at the person's house to have dinner and just commune and talk about the class and the stuff that was going on. I'm, like I said, I, yeah, I mean, it was phenomenal. It was probably the best money I've ever seen the city spend, personally.
I, I would just, I am uncomfortable with taking, I would like to see these, these supported, these organizations supported. I don't believe when staff walked into the room tonight, and maybe I'm wrong, that they anticipated that ARPA funding would be used for the loss at the maintenance yard. And perhaps we should, I mean, if there is a promise that we could fund these with any balance, any funding we have left in February or March.
Well, I, that would be...
But we can't, we...
In all candor, that's not where my recommendation would be. I mean, it would, when we get to general fund money, we're gonna be looking at the actual hard needs of our...
Yeah, so it'll be general fund, it'll likely come out of the fund balance, and that will play into next year, and then things will not get funded. So we'll, we'll find a way to get this done, but other things will be sacrificed as a result.
I do have a feeling...
It's that, or this, or whatever else you think is less of a priority.
No, I have a feeling we're going to go into some difficult financial times as a city. I mean, other cities are, I think we're headed that way, too. It's just the way that, that we're headed, but...
Well, we'll get there a lot faster if we, below $650,000. But I just...
I think there was invest.
Yeah. It's real money, so it's your decision, council, but we're doing well now, but, you know, it's not growing on trees. Any other discussion?
For the benefit of the clerk, could you possibly restate the exact amounts in your motion, Councilmember Dovey? Apologies, we just want to make sure we have it right.
I set aside 450,000 for, and that's a little less than the total of the 250 and the 218, but 450,000 for the maintenance yard, the tools, the hardening it, the security, everything we voted on earlier. And then I said 200,000 left over to go to financial literacy. In my motion, I said 100,000 towards the city program that we've already tested, and then the other 100,000, which was 50,000 unallocated, and 50,000 to go to however you want to divide it up on these programs. I mean, we could pick one and say, I didn't, I didn't allocate where the other 100,000 went.
Council President.
Then I would make a motion to take that extra 100,000 to allocate, a friendly amendment to allocate that to the Fusion job training program.
You accept that as a friendly amendment?
I accept, I accept that.
Is there a second? Or actually, would you accept that?
Yeah, I can accept the second.
All right. Did you, do, do you get that, or do you understand that? Okay. And for the folks watching, I'm talking to the city clerk. Okay, so there's been a friendly amendment to allocate toward the Fusion Poverty, Poverty Bay Cafe jobs training program at $175,000. Or was it the 100 or?
It's 100.
100, okay. For that program.
So then would there still be 50,000 unallocated?
No.
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 Where was it, where would the rest go?
100,000 to financial literacy, 5,000 to Fusion.
Got it. Okay.
And the rest goes to...
The rest goes to, yeah.
Apologies, we still didn't follow the 200,000 breakdown specifically. I heard 50,000 unallocated towards Fusion, and then...
Oh, the, the 200,000 is broke down specifically now with the federal friendly amendment, 100,000 for Fusion, and 100,000 for the city program financial piece that we're running right now.
Okay. And that's 200.
And then 450, so we have 650, right?
Right, yes.
So we have, we did 450 and 200, and that comes to 650. And the city still has to make up the difference of the 450, whatever the 18,000 is, or what make up the difference of the 450, whatever the 18,000 is or whatever, for the maintenance.
Councilmember Sephardoson, do you have anything?
Councilmember, Sephardoson?
Yeah, and one thing I did fail to mention, I, I, I'm still not in favor of this proposal, but if, if you've, yeah, a lot of those programs that we see here also have one-on-one, one-on-one continued coaching for these individuals who go through the financial literacy with the other programs. You know, I know Councilmember McDaniel was there and I, you know, I did attend as many as I could. And I, you know, the program is not bad, but yet I think we're not, if people had come and testified for the other programs, we would have had such, you know, good testimonies, testimonies also. So I'm not in support of this, but whatever the council does, I'll vote the way I want to vote. So, yeah. Thank you.
Councilor Tran?
Thank you, Mayor. So with this $450,000 proposed by Councilmember Dovi, earlier both Councilmember McDaniel and I did not vote to fund for the security guard and other security measure for the maintenance yard. If we roll everything into this 450,000, then I can't vote for this.
You're not in favor of the extra security at the yard?
Right, because my argument prior was with the same amount of money, we could have very well fund, you know, 1.5 FTE to the police department. I am in favor of that instead of hiring unarmed security guard to protect this maintenance yard.
But that now is, that, that has been decided that we're doing that.
Right, yeah.
Now about how to pay for it.
Right, but with this money combined altogether, I don't know if I would be voting for this motion. Just saying.
So you're in favor of it coming out of the general fund? That's the issue. The only issue before this body now is where the money's coming from, because it's, it's, it's been approved. So do we pay for it out of general fund or do we pay for it out of this?
Or a little bit of each.
What's that?
Or a little bit of each.
Can I make a comment, Mayor?
Yeah.
You know, when we passed the, the way back to, seems like way back, but not that long ago, to do the 450 for the whole project or the number, we also instructed up to, and we were looking at if we harden it, maybe we don't need security. I mean, so we're not actually, I don't believe, I voted to say, this is what it's going to be. I believe I voted on, we're up to the dollar amount, and our staff, our mayor, EJ, the police chief, Hutton, are going to come up to us and say, here's how we're going to spend the 450. Now if they come back and say, hey, the only way we can do it is to have a full-time security there, I mean, they got to, they're the ones running the business. We authorize, I authorized them in my vote to come up with the best way to spend the money to, to protect our assets and our taxpayers' assets. So I look at it a little different. It's not either or, it's here's the plan, they now can go execute it, and now we're funding it.
Well, we're going to look into, we're going to harden the gates, we're going to make sure that there, people can't break through the gates anymore, all three gates. We're going to look into the cost of electrocuting the fence, electrifying the fence, electrifying the fence and electrocuting anybody who bothers to touch it. And, you know, and then, you know, see how we do. If we don't get anybody, if it looks like this is not necessary, we may not have to do the full year. We may have to do more, I mean, if nobody's coming around and we've got this covered, we may not have to spend that money. But in the short term, I gotta have somebody over there. Yeah. Okay, that's the discussion. And Councilmember McDaniel, did you have anything?
Yeah, one last question. If this motion fails, can the motion come back up with a different price tag?
Yes.
Okay, I'm ready to vote then.
Okay, great. Okay, there's been a, a motion, a friendly motion, and let's make sure that we're all aware. So the, it's for an allocation of $450,000.
Steel Lake.
Yeah, for the, not Steel Lake, for the.
150,000 of ARPA money towards the general security upgrades and costs.
$100,000 for the Fusion program and $100,000 for the city education program, financial literacy. All right, there's been a motion, a discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
I'm sorry, nay. I'm sorry.
That's okay, we.
Nay for me.
We, we need to do, that's okay, we'll, we'll do a, Jennifer, take a roll.
I don't see my picture. I'm here though, by the way. I don't see where I went.
Oh, funny.
Jennifer.
Councilmember Sephardoson?
Nay.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Nay.
Councilmember Tran?
Nay.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember Dovi?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Honda?
Nay.
Council President Kochmar?
Aye.
The motion fails four to three.
All right.
So what's your proposal?
Is there a motion before the body?
I made the motion to use $250,000 of ARPA to fund the theft and hardening of the maintenance facility.
Oh, a second motion.
May I ask a question?
What about the, just out of curiosity, there's been a motion, a second. Council President?
So there's more money than that? There's 650 in the pot.
Yep.
How do you want to use the other money?
Let me pull it back up real quick.
Sorry, clarification on that. Does that include potential security measures like a security guard as well, or is that specifically for?
It's 250, I'm not gonna.
Whatever, for whatever, okay.
I'm not gonna pick on that one.
And not, and so your, your intent is not to use any of the ARPA funding to recoup the city at the 213,000?
No, 250, the 250,000 is for the city to be used for, the, 250,000 of the ARPA money to be used by the city to recoup from either stolen stuff or the hardening. It's not the 450, I'm looking at less of money, so we can use more money. These, I don't, I'll be honest, man, like you guys said, you guys are going to prioritize them, and these guys are going to go away. These are not going to be high priorities next year. So in my mind, it's a.
We've never done them?
Yep.
And they won't be. You're right.
Yeah, so, and I, I, I understand what you guys are talking about, but I also think that having some job training for some of these people and some of this financial literacy is, is important too. So I understand what everybody's talking about. For me, my two cents is the, the Casa Latina for, what was the remainder then? It's 450, it's 400,000 then?
Can you put that back up on the screen?
I'd say 100,000 for the four remaining ones then, minus, so the Casa Latina, Fusion, YWCA and Financial Literacy Shop.
So you want to give each of those 100,000 each? Is that what you're saying?
Councilor Dovi? I'm sorry, was there a second for that?
I did, second.
Councilor Dovi?
So it's been moved and seconded?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I guess I have a couple clarification questions. The proposal is 250,000, which is 200,000 less than we need to do it, to do the project on the, that buys the tools, basically, yes. And then you're splitting 400,000 between Financial Peace University, the YWCA, Poverty Bay and Casa Latina, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And after that, where do you, are you going to suggest that we get the other 200 to maintain the security at the location? Have you thought about that?
No, I don't agree with the security. I voted against it. So in my mind, that is, I mean, I, I think the police can handle it, to be honest. I mean, it was a six-minute call and it was a, a one-time, in my mind, issue on that one. I think it's, that's my two cents.
We lost a million dollars at that location prior to this. It hit over and over and over and over. We've lost a million dollars at this location.
What changes got made since the million dollars?
It's your guys' decision. Go ahead.
And I'll just finish up. I think we have to move forward with something. I, I would only suggest, as you think through the, the ARPA projects, the financial literacy, you might want to, I would recommend that instead of going 250 and 400, I'd split them down the middle then, because at least we get closer in our budget to, we're going to have to have the security, we're going to have to do that. It's going to come somewhere and I don't know who you want to say that we can't do something. And ARPA money is the most free money to do it. So if, if you're not as hard as, hey, it's got to be 250 and 400, then split it down the middle and go half to the maintenance and half to the programs. And, because you already split them from 175 to 100, so you're going to half hang them anyway. So why not, why do we hang them all? Let's pick two of, two of them and give them, but I, I really believe we have to send the money to.
What does that bring down to? Are you talking 325?
What's that?
325 then?
That's what I just said, yeah. That's, and then Jim has to figure out in the budget, it's going to be hard, but we're going to have to find the extra 100, 150,000.
I'd like to make an amendment for 400,000 for the maintenance yard at whatever needs to be spent there, and then 50,000 for the four programs.
Okay. Paul, would you take that as a friendly amendment?
No.
What's that?
No.
Okay. Okay, so there's been a, all right, as to, what about Councilmember Dovi's amendment? Would you take that as a friendly amendment? And what was it again?
I actually didn't make the amendment. I was discussing it with Paul to see if he was interested, would be willing.
Man, it's like a, my issue with this is like a backdoor maneuver in my mind. I knew that, like I said, I, I did not want to vote for the security. I understand what you guys' stance for it. I totally accept that one. But then by funding this one, it's like approving something that I disagreed with.
Right.
And it's, it's rough for me to, to take that one.
That's okay.
The 350, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna look at the council member who also voted no with me. Is, is 325 something that you'd be willing to accept today? I mean, this is about negotiation, it's about figuring out, coming to a consensus.
What about 400?
The 400, we just voted no against, so.
No, it was 450 before.
Oh, 450, yeah.
So the deputy mayor's proposal was at $400,000 to cover most of the cost, and then each one of these groups get 50,000.
I read through the proposals on every most, every one of these guys, the 50,000 doesn't even cover administration for three years. So I mean, I, it's better off just to chop all down but two then at that point, go back to what we had before practically.
Hey, Paul, I, I would be willing to accept the suggestion from Councilmember Dovi to split the money in half, 325.
Okay.
That way, the maintenance people have enough money to buy back their equipments, and they just have a little bit extra to upgrade their fences or whatever. But I don't think they have enough money to hire the security guard. So I'm okay with the 325.
So what, so.
How's it going to be spent then, the 325 for the non, for the financial literacy?
So 325 for the maintenance yard and 325 for everything else.
So, you know, I'm wondering if we shouldn't just agree to the 325 for the maintenance and then send this back to Human Services to reallocate the rest of the money?
Oh, that's a great idea.
Without, because they, they spend so much time on this, they know.
That's a great idea. Brian, the council president, and Brian and Sarah, the council president just suggested that we approve the 325 and then send the, the balance of the 325 back to the Human Service Commission to see how they would prioritize these gifts.
I only have one comment on that.
Yeah.
I think the 325, that's a good base to start, do maintenance. We need to do that.
Yeah.
Instead of sending it back to the committee, why don't we just take it 75,000 each one and see if they can do a program for 75? And if they can't, then we can roll what they don't need back into one of the other programs to make them more whole. I mean, instead of going back and redoing this, just go.
All right.
75,000 for each one plus the three, and do it that way.
Or roll it into the maintenance yard.
Yeah.
Was it one, two, three?
I'm sorry, so who gets the 75 each?
It's 300 for this and 350 for the, for the maintenance facility.
Okay, so the.
Go ahead.
So 350 for the maintenance repair, for the entire package of the maintenance repairs that includes the replacement and the security, that's three.
350.
350. And the balance, which is.
300.
300.
Whoa, whoa, it's 325.
325.
325.
350 sounds better.
Would be allocated five ways.
No, four ways.
Four ways, at $75,000.
No, that, that's the 8125 rather than.
So I believe it's 350, and then the remaining 300 is split four ways, 75 each?
It's 325 and then 325.
Would you accept 350 and then splitting the rest 75?
And the, and the question is, is split four ways between alternative option one, which would be Casa Latina, Poverty Bay, YWCA and the City of Federal Way program we're already running.
Jennifer, do you have that? Okay, Jennifer, can you say this? Hold on, let's get, make sure that Jennifer, our, our city clerk, has this. Jennifer?
So the current proposal, excuse me, is for $350,000 of the ARPA money to be allocated for the maintenance and replacement of tools at the.
And, and, and also security, but just.
And security, with a balance of 325,000, 300,000 allocated four ways, or $75,000 each.
And those four ways are Fusion, Casa Latina, YWCA and the city program.
Okay. All right. Paul, does that actually?
What does that, what does that come out to? Is that?
That's 650 overall, total.
Can you read it one more time then?
Sure. So $350,000 of the ARPA money would be allocated towards the maintenance, or towards the joint maintenance building for repair, security hardening of the facility, with a balance of $300,000 allocated four ways, at $75,000 apiece for Casa Latina, Fusion, YWCA and the city's financial literacy workshop.
I'll tell you what, I'd want 325, and I'll take the hit on the financial literacy workshop. I'll take the money off that you guys, you know, from there to make it so that the other guys get more money. So whatever we need to do, I'll take the hit. I, I will vote to take a hit on the financial literacy, the one I support the most, because I don't think we need as much money to do as much good. But I want it at 325. I mean, I'm not going to budge on that. I mean, I'm one vote, but that's our two cents.
So, but, okay, so what you're, what you're saying is 350?
325, no, 325 to the maintenance, done deal.
Okay.
And then what does that come out to? So.
That's 325 left.
325 left.
325 divided by four.
No, we're not going to divide four because I don't divide.
Oh, divided by three.
No.
Divided by five.
Do you want me to pull up an Excel?
Good lord, yes, sorry, my apologies.
Well, then we can see the text and the announce. Is that helpful?
So 325, you're.
Yeah, please, sorry. I know what you're saying.
Divide by four, it's 81250. Right.
Yeah, and I'll take, I'll take, as I said, I'll take less than.
So divide by four, it's what? 81250.
81250.
Do we need to do that?
So, okay, 325, so the motion is, is this your motion?
Yes.
Okay, 325 to go, to cover the costs overall of the, the losses suffered and, and the future security, and then three, the balance, 325 to be covered four ways at 81. 81250.
250.
Are you listening to this, Jennifer? You got it?
81250.
Or do you have it?
81250.
Okay.
You want me to speak?
All right.
What are the four ways? Because you, you made an earlier motion that I don't think was seconded, so if you want to do a new one, that would help, just get it on record.
And we have 81, is it 250?
Yeah, for, for the four.
Okay.
All right. Okay, did everybody know that? Got it? Okay, so is that your motion?
Do you want me to say it again, or we're good?
No, you're, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Is that your second?
Yes.
Okay. There's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Councilor Dovi?
Will you repeat the motion just one more time?
Jennifer? That's why I wanted to make sure Jennifer had it.
Okay. The motion is to allocate $325,000 of the ARPA money towards the operations, maintenance facility repairs, security and hardening, with the remaining 325,000 being divided four ways at $81,250,000 between Fusion, Casa Latina, YWCA and the city's financial literacy workshop. workshop.
That is my motion.
All right.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, it's a Jennifer, it also includes equipment replacement, I don't know if that was in there.
It is.
Yeah.
It is. All right, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Opposed? Okay, good.
Nay.
All right.
Nay.
Jennifer?
Councilmember Sephardosson?
Nay.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Aye.
Councilmember Tran?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember Dovi?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Honda?
Aye.
Council President Coachmar?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
6-1.
All right, thank you very much, let's move on, 9A ordinance is first reading, this is Council Bill 868, Ordinance 2023, the Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendments. First, we'll have a presentation from Chaney Scottson, our senior planner.
Oh my gosh. Hi, good evening, council, mayor, council president, deputy mayor, I'm Chaney Scottson, and I'll be presenting the 2023 Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendments. So the policy question tonight is, should the city council approve the proposed comprehensive plan text and map amendments? Here on the screen is the procedural summary, the text is in different colored fonts to reflect some changes in scope that occurred between when we initiated this process, the blue reflects the comprehensive plan amendments related to city center or downtown, the red reflects the comprehensive plan amendments that are related to the South King Fire and Rescue property, and the black text reflects the combined. So in summary, the 2023 comprehensive plan amendments are number one, and this deviates a little bit from your packet in terms of organization, just, bear with me, this is, I think, more simple to understand, there are both a map and a text amendment with this proposal, but it is for the South King Fire and Rescue property just along North 320th Street, and the proposal is to change the comprehensive plan designation and zoning and an associated policy. The second kind of category here is text goals and policy amendments to, related to city center core downtown, the TC3 redevelopment plan, and then a comprehensive plan designation change and zoning, or rezoning for TC3, city-owned property and Hillside Plaza, and then lastly, designating a downtown architectural overlay boundary. So in more detail, the South King Fire and Rescue amendments include a change in the land use policy that is responding to the proposed comprehensive plan designation change, and that's here, so this is the South King Fire and Rescue property, it's on the east side of I-5, north of 320th Street, the box to the, on the top of the screen, or is current, it's an orange color, it's an existing property-zoned multifamily, and the hot pink is the proposed rezoning and redesignation change from multifamily to commercial enterprise, and the land use policy amendment is to kind of assist in that rezone. The city center downtown TC3 plan amendments can be summarized in a couple ways, there's some changing to the organization of the goals and policies in the chapter, so there's these new categories or titles, so basically easier to digest the goals and policies of the chapter, the language is amended to be more active, such as adopting land use regulations, instead of develop land use patterns, using more clear and objective and descriptive language that's active, instead of passive and vague, removing words like encourage and replacing them with require, and then there are text changes that are responsive to market, or changes in market conditions relating to the future potential uses of TC3, so basically removing barriers or limitations on the TC3 redevelopment plan. And the, this is the A map change related to the rezoning and the change in comprehensive plan designation of TC3 and Hillside Plaza from city center frame zoning to city center core, which is our densest zone, and so the top of the screen shows it in light pink, because that's frame as the existing, and then the proposed is to turn it darker purple, which is, I think I said pink earlier, I meant to say purple, and then the proposed is dark purple for the city center frame, or core, sorry, it's really late, and then lastly, here on the screen is the boundary that staff recommends for the downtown overlay, the downtown architectural overlay, this was presented at the Land Use and Transportation Committee, and if you have any questions about that, I'll probably refer to Keith to answer those, but in your packet, or between the LUTC presentation and tonight's meeting, you received a memo on some potential options to explore, so on the screen here is option one, which staff recommends, which includes the, it's like a boot shape, including Commons property, the transit center, and up to the north along PBR to Hillside Plaza, whereas option two and option three increase in size, pushing the boundary west. And on your screen here are the factors to be considered in a comprehensive plan, and the responses, or staff responses were included in the packet, along with the criteria for amending the comprehensive plan. On the screen here is a reflection of the series of recommendations that have occurred so far, with the mayor proposing adoption of the proposed ordinance, are there any questions?
Council, any questions for Chaney? Councilmember Dovi?
I just have one question, and maybe Keith needs to answer it, but anyway, go back to your map, right there, the boot, and the land use, I kinda made the comment, we should make it squared out, I've come to the conclusion that your boot is a better way to go, so thank you for showing that, I do have the question though, as development happens, what, Keith, can you talk about development contracts or things that could be negotiated with the developers to make it so it's easy for them to meet our code and advantageous form to want to do that?
Yeah, absolutely, I think, you know, part of the conversation we had at land use was, you know, what does it mean to be inside the downtown designation versus just being in the city center core zone, and what we've done is we've added some architectural standards for downtown, we're gonna talk about that on the next agenda item, so I don't wanna be a spoiler here, but, you know, basically, it's gonna raise the bar a little bit, but it's gonna get a common vernacular on what those buildings are gonna look like in that area, we got a letter, council got a letter, we all got a letter, from the owner of the Commons, who said, expressed some concerns about having to comply with those architectural guidelines, and one of the things that we've talked about with the Commons, we're in the process right now for TC3, it will be a fact for the Sound Transit properties, and we've also had conversations with representatives for Hillside Plaza, all of them are interested in working with the city on a development agreement, and what that is, is like a contract, and the contract does allow for some deviation in code, it allows you to kind of tailor it specifically to what makes the most sense on that particular property, so for example, with the Commons, you know, it'll give us an opportunity to sit down through the development agreement process and talk about, you know, how those standards might work best for them and for the city as well, and so I think there's some flexibility built into the tools that the city has in its toolbox, and so I think that's, at least would be my answer, is, I think we have the ability to negotiate and look out what's best for our downtown and for the property owners with the tools we have.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Chaney.
I do have questions.
Oh, Councilmember Sephardosson?
Yes, thank you, mayor, in the packet, there are several questions I have around the South King Fire property, so there's a mention of rezoning it from multifamily to commercial enterprise, so, and then later on, it talks about, no, so my question is then, it talks about whichever zoning it ends up being, so why is there, why is there recommendation to change it to commercial enterprise, that's one question, I have several questions.
So council member, the, right now, the current zoning on the property is multifamily, it's RM, is it 2400, Chaney? And the request from the property owner, so South King Fire came to the city and asked for the property to be rezoned to commercial enterprise, and that requires us not only to change the zoning, but the comprehensive plan has to be consistent with the zoning, so that's why there's a comprehensive plan amendment that goes along with the rezone.
Okay, then why is it also talking about multifamily then, that, within that same context?
Because it's multifamily today, and so the existing zoning and the existing designation is multifamily, and we did the analysis that went with that, is, you know, recognizing that we're getting a lot of multifamily kind of pointed more at our downtown area, that this area, because the Papay property is right to the west of it, and you've got office use across the street to the south, that this made more sense to be more of a commercial use than a multifamily use, especially given that it's really right on 320th, and it has the BPA corridor right behind it.
Okay, and then, when it talks about school impact fees, it mentions permanent supportive housing, and I'm surprised that that's called out specifically.
I don't know that I know what you're talking about, is, do you have a specific-
Yeah, it's, oh, see, I can't get to the page now, but it was within the comp plan, when you're, in the discussion, it talks about school impact fees for the South King Fire property, and then it says if, it says school impact fee if it's commercial enterprise would be zero, but if it's permanent housing, but it doesn't say just permanent housing, it says permanent supportive housing, so, okay, I'll ask you later, then, no worries. And then, and then with the, with the letter that we got from, from the mall?
Yes.
Merlin.
Yes, Merlong Geyer.
So if we were to agree with their letter, right, and then they sell it to another developer, property manager, whomever, would that, would, whatever we agree with them, would, how do we know that the new owners would honor that agreement?
So, so that's a great question, so the way that development agreements work, first off, I'm not sure I said I agreed with their letter, I said we have an opportunity to-
No, 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 I'm just saying, if we do.
To talk about that, right.
It's an if question.
So, so whatever, you know, ultimately, the development agreement runs with the property, so the development agreement, whatever development agreement we would execute with Merlong Geyer for the Commons, it would have a certain term associated with that, and that could be 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, that's up to us to decide, and that's a negotiated point that we would have with them, but if they were then to sell the property after the development agreement was executed by the city council, that development agreement would run with the property, and anyone buying it would have to either comply with it or approach the city requesting amendments to that agreement.
Thank you, outside of that, I do agree with Councilmember Dovi about expanding the city center core, so that's all I have, thank you so much, mayor, for the time.
All right, any other comments, questions? Okay, would the deputy city clerk please read the ordinance title? No, I'm sorry, before we get there, excuse me, we've got two public comments, we've got Chief David Van Vulcan, David Van Vulcanberg with the South King Fire and Rescue, thank you, chief, for your patience, and that of your entire team, we've got a couple of commissioners, we've got fire commissioners Mark Thompson and David Berger, thank you so much for your patience this evening, chief, the floor is yours.
Thank you, well, good evening, you're getting closer, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for the time to address the body this evening, this is a unique opportunity in that our priorities complement each other, and it's an opportunity for South King and the City of Federal Way to build upon our great partnership in serving the community. So, by rezoning the property, it does allow a potential relocation site for any commercial enterprise that may be dislocated by Sound Transit, it provides a potential landing spot for those businesses, it also creates a situation where commercial enterprise traffic, so trucks, things like that, are moved to the periphery of the city and not in the central areas where the city's trying to redevelop, it also is an opportunity for the city to have businesses come into the community that provide a livable wage, which we know is one of the priorities for the council, in that livable wages attract residents within Federal Way to stay within Federal Way. For the Fire District, it does, it makes the property more viable, it makes it more attractive for us to surplus this piece of property, but really and truly, the big impact for us is the downstream implications for the funding, the money from the property is set aside to do retrofit, seismic retrofits, and upgrades to Station 62 as it relates to firefighter safety and wellness, and puts us in a position to sustain response out of that building long-term, and so it puts us in a position to also provide additional training opportunities with Station 68 and some potential upgrades for their training ground, so it's a, it's a, it's a situation where our priorities and the city's priorities align, and it's an opportunity for us to continue to work together, so thank you very much for your consideration on the rezone and the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, chief, Evan Schneider.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for taking the time this evening to consider this ordinance, among many very important topics, so the chief covered a lot of the notes I had in support, but I'm Evan Schneider, I'm with Heartland, we're a real estate advisory firm, working on behalf of the Fire District to submit the rezone request and comprehensive plan amendment. In addition to what the chief said, the use creates an opportunity for the city to provide jobs within the city, and it also provides, or it does not detract from the city's ability to meet their housing growth targets, per the Housing Action Plan prepared in 2020, there was approximately twice as much capacity within the city as was needed to meet the housing targets, so the reduction of the 300 units that the site has capacity for would not be expected to have an adverse impact, otherwise, just wanna thank you all for considering this tonight, and have a wonderful holiday, thank you.
All right, thanks, Evan, and thank you, commissioners, again, for being here.
Very much appreciated, we all do.
Okay, with the deputies, were there any more requests or comment? All right, the deputy city clerk, please read the ordinance title.
Council Bill 868, Ordinance 2023 Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendments, an amendment of the City of Federal Way, Washington, amending the Federal Way Comprehensive Plan, the Comprehensive Plan Map and Zoning Map, Designating a Downtown Architectural Overlay, Changing the Comprehensive Plan Designation and Zoning of Approximately 20 Acres Located North of South 316th Street Between Pete Von Reichbauer Way, South, and 23rd Avenue, South, From City Center Frame, CCF, To City Center Core, CCC, And Changing the Comprehensive Plan Designation and Zoning of 19.05 Acres of Land Located on the North Side of South 320th Street, East of I-5, From Multifamily, RM 2400, To Commercial Enterprise, CE.
All right, Councilmember Dovi?
I move to forward the proposed- I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the December 5, 2023 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
It's been a motion to the second, is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. Item B, Council Bill 869, Ordinance, Code Amendments Relating to City Center Core and City Center Frame, Keith Niven, you're up again. Chaney, thank you very much, great job, why don't you take the rest of the night off?
We have all the love, too.
You know, we're waiting all night to say that.
Good evening, mayor, council president, Coachmar, deputy mayor, Honda, city council members, Keith Niven back, so this is a companion- So this is a companion to the goals and policy amendments that you guys just approved, and this is actually the implementation part of it. And what we're talking about tonight is changing our city code to help us get where we want to get to. So the policy question in front of the city council is, should the city council amend Title 19 to include updated development standards to better reflect the urban vision desired for the city center and downtown? So the proposal includes make changes to the city center core code to clarify and better implement updated goals and policies, to add minimum standards and requirements for structured parking, to add new architectural standards for the downtown only, so not the whole city center core, just the downtown, and then make changes to notes regarding spas in the city center core and city center frame. This is my hitchhiker. We had some issues with some businesses kind of not understanding how our code read. So since we were doing some changes to city center core, we went ahead and added this, so, and I'll explain later when we get there. So I'm not going to read all this. Basically, what all this is, some new definitions, and part of the reason we needed to add new definitions is because we're using a different metric to measure both the minimum amount of development for non-residential and maximum amount, and that's floor area ratio. And the floor area ratio, to understand that better, it's like if you had a piece of property and you had a single-story building over the entire parcel, that would be a 1 FAR. If it was a two-story building over the entire property, that would be a 2 FAR. So it works like that. So what we're suggesting in the code is for non-residential having a minimum FAR of 1.5 and a maximum FAR of 10, and, and I'll have some photos to show you in a second to help demonstrate what those look like. Residential, minimum of 46 units per acre and a maximum of 230 units per acre. And then structured parking, having a requirement of 95% for residential, 75% for office, 40% for retail, 75% for entertainment, and then 75% for hotel. So giving you some examples, here's some things that are maybe familiar and not quite familiar to you. This first thing on the left here, this is First and 348th. It's under construction, so it doesn't exactly look like that just yet, but it will soon enough. So this is, this is running at about 38 units per acre. And you can say, wow, that, that seems like not very much if we're talking about framing our downtown between 46 and 230. And if you look at what's happening on this property, there's, there's a really dense building at the corner of 348th and, and First, which is this five-story building at the corner, but the rest of the property is three-story woody walk-ups with surface parking. So this is really kind of a blend of what we used to get in Federal Way, basically three-story woody walk-ups that were surface parked, and what we're trying to get downtown, which is more of that mixed-use, five-over-one, five-over-two buildings. If you look at what's below it, so that's Park 16. So Park 16 is 18 units per acre, and that is truly a three-story woody walk-up. So you can see, three-story woody walk-up is going to give you about 18 units per acre. Something that's a blend of three-story and five-over-one, five-over-two might get you to about 40. And then this one on the right-hand side, this is from Bellevue. This is a complete five-over-one project with structured parking, and it's 197 units per acre. So this is still, we could, we could actually put something denser than this in our downtown and still make that 230 unit per acre cap. That's what we're proposing in our code. So for office, I couldn't find a, a great office project that, that would really work. So this right now is a project in Bellevue. This is at two, almost three FAR. So our minimum FAR that we're proposing for our downtown is half of this. So I drew this yellow line in this building, it really, this line doesn't exist in reality. But if you, if you imagine that was the roof line, half of this building would result in a 1.5 FAR. So this building, which is right now 10 stories, but if you look at the site plan for this building, the building sits here, but there's a lot of surface parking associated with this, which is what drives the FAR of this particular building down. This building, which is Bellevue Summit, this is an FAR of 8.5. So this is a 17-story building that's over the entire parcel. All the parking for this is structured. So our downtown core zoning would accommodate something actually a little bit bigger than this. And then city hall's down here, and it's 0.34. And the reason for that is frankly, we've got a big, big surface parking lot outside. And so that gives you an idea of the ranges of floor area ratio and what we're talking about for our downtown, hopefully. We talked about the footprint and the boot, I'm not going to stay there because I don't want you to change your mind. We had some conversation about vision in the code because we had to actually describe this. So then there's basically some examples. And really, what we're trying to do is to develop a vocabulary for the buildings that will happen in our downtown. And what we talk about is things that have a defined cornice on top. So having basically a top of the building that ends the building and it doesn't just bleed into the sky is architecturally seen as something that is of value. This first building and this last building have a great cornice. We talk about something called tripartite construction. So like, what they've done here with this elevation is there's a clearly a ground level, a middle and a top that look very different. So there's like three pieces. It's a way to humanize the vertical scale of an otherwise tall building. When you look at these ones that are deemed inappropriate, this first project is a multifamily project I'm very familiar with. If you look at the architecture on this building, it's really just a bunch of panels that have been painted different colors. There's really not a lot going on there. This is a very simple building, and I can tell you that the council I was familiar with really did not like it a lot. The, the other buildings we have here, similar, kind of monolithic. This one at the end starts to turn into a nicer building from an overall composition, but it has this giant cornice on top, which is called sometimes an eyebrow. And really, what that is, is the architect says, hey, look at me, I've got this giant eyebrow, and I'm a special building. And really, what we're trying to do is, I think, have more classical architecture within our downtown, and so that's why we're really looking for this. So pictures are great. You need some words to go with the pictures, that's really what this next section is. And really, wanted to keep this at a fairly high level and not get down into actually designing window mullions and doorknobs for architects. They should be able to pick that level of detail themselves. All right, so other changes of significance, one of the things that now that we've designated downtown and city center core are kind of two different areas, suggesting that we remove the possibility of having emergency shelter in the downtown. So in the boot area, you would not be able to put an emergency shelter, but it is allowed in the rest of city center core because based on 1220, we needed to allow it where hotels are allowed. And then my, my little hitchhiker code amendment, city center core, city center frame, the old language used to say spas and water parks are not permitted as a principal use in this zone. Hotels, health clubs, and similar uses may include accessory spas not exceeding 2,000 square feet. The new proposed language, which I think is a lot clearer, is spas and water parks are only permitted when accessory to hotels, health clubs, and similar uses. And the planning commission recommended deleting the 2,000 square feet. They thought that was arbitrary, which I think we agreed with. This is, we, we did hear from architects and property owners, and we responded by incorporating some changes. These, we had gotten before LUTC, and we presented these at LUTC. And then we got some additional ones that just came in really this week, and so we've added it to the ordinance, but it was not in your packet. So, and this really relates to, like, if your building has a courtyard, really what we're interested in is the sides of the building that are perceivable from the public, right? Once you get inside the courtyard, like, us requiring there to be 30% stone or brick on that interior of the courtyard, that really should be, the developer makes that decision because that's their marketing and everything else, and there's less of a public impact inside those kind of more secure areas. So that's what this language is intending to do. But with that, I think that Kent and I think we've been responsive to all the public comments we've received about this draft code language. And with that, I'm going to say, option one is recommend approval of the proposed code amendments. Option two would be do not recommend it and provide direction to staff, and the mayor's recommendation is option one.
Council, any questions? All right, great job, Keith, thank you very much. Do we have any public comment? Jennifer? No one signed up? Anyone? All right. Deputy city clerk, would you please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 869, Code Amendments Relating to City Center Core and City Center Frame. An Ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, Relating to Development Regulation Amendments Applicable to the City Center Core (CCC) and City Center Frame (CCF) Zones and Adoption of Downtown Architectural Overlay, Amending Federal Way Revised Code 1905040, and Adoption of Downtown Architectural Overlay, Amending Federal Way Revised Code 1905040, 19190010, 19225010, 19225015, 19225020, 19225030, 19225040, 19225050, 19225055, 19225060, 19225070, 19225075, 19225080, 19225090, 19225100, 19225105, 19225110, 19225120, 19225130, 19225140, and 19230030, Adding Federal Way Revised Code 19245020 and 19110025, and Repealing Federal Way Revised Code 19130150.
All right. Councilmember Dovey.
That was some good reading. Thank you.
Yeah, great job.
I move to forward the proposed ordinance to December 5, 2023 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. Item C, Council Bill 870 Ordinance Amendment to Wildways Concomitant Development Agreement. We made the presentation during the public hearing. Is there any further public comment? Or is there any public comment? Any public comment? All right. Would the deputy city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 870 Amendments to Wildways Concomitant Development Agreement, An Ordinance of the City of Federal Way, excuse me, of the City of Federal Way, Washington, Relating to Amending the Enchanted Parks Incorporated Concomitant Development Agreement.
All right. Councilmember Dovey.
I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the December 5, 2023 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to ask some questions about the warehouse portion of this.
All right. Keith?
Still here.
It's almost midnight. So I've heard from a number of people that with concerns about having the warehouses in there and the fear that it could look at, look like what has been built on the IRG property. Is that possible that that's what this means?
Yeah, sorry. I was looking for a piece of paper. So we ended up getting...
Well, we'll get back to that.
I'm kind of loud. We ended up getting six public comments, and the public comments were focusing around the things you would expect. It was, it was truck traffic. It was year-round traffic as opposed to seasonal. It was impacts to Hailibos Creek, potential issues with crime and noise. I think your question in terms of could this look like IRG and the giant warehouses that are on that property, there is nothing in the proposed, in the development agreement that would preclude that. And if you have a different thought, Kent, please jump in.
It would allow that.
I, I don't, I think that would be a horrible location for warehouses to be at, and I, there's so many people that live around that area, and I just don't think that would be a good use for that property.
Okay. Is there any other further, further comment? Councilmember Dovey?
You know, I look at this, making this change as kind of one of those life-changing things in Federal Way. It secures Wildways so they actually have the ability to invest in the park and bring in more rides and employ people and do things that we want. And in 50, you know, I think the agreement goes to 2053 or whatever that timeline is. I mean, if we don't give them the opportunity to grow their business and keep the employees in Federal Way and, and keep it going by giving them the security of a long-term agreement, then we're not, I don't think we're for jobs. I mean, in, in 2053, you know, or something happens and there is warehouses sometime later down the thing, I mean, that's just progress. But everything we've been brought to was they want to have security so they can continue to grow the park and continue to make it a viable business in Federal Way that employs, what, 1,100 people or whatever the number is in the summer? So I really support us making this change, giving them security, and keeping a good business partner in our city. I'm not, I'm not worried about the future because it's got to go through Keith's department, it's got to go through EJ's department, it's got to go through all sorts of things if there's any major changes other than growing the park. And a hotel is a great idea, in my opinion.
I'm not against the hotel.
What's that?
I'm not against the hotel. I'm, the, what I'm concerned about are the warehouses. And if the warehouses were taken out of this, and I would, I think, I love the parks, it brings people here, I, I don't want to see the park go away. I want to see it grow and develop, but I don't want to see warehouses there.
All right. Councilmember Walsh?
No.
Okay. Counsel? No? Councilmember McDaniel?
When we, when this was brought up and we talked about, I think, the land use, it was, one of the concepts was, there was emails that was shown that was contracts were going to be signed for years out. So there was like, we sign this contract, we, we approve this, but then the people who actually owned Wildways were going to do a 10-year contract or something like that. Is that still the game plan or, because it sounds like they're going to lock it up for a long period of time. It's not like, hey, we're going to sign this off, it closes, we want the warehouse out. I have the same issue she does, and I read the emails of the complaints about the parking and the, the noise and stuff. So what is the consideration, since they're here, I'm sure they can speak to it, what is the consideration for if warehouses do come, when would that be a possibility? Is that within the next 10 years if it does happen? Or is it like, no, we don't have any plans for that for the next 10 years?
So...
Outside of your...
I'm, I'm going to answer this a couple ways. One is, you're right. Jeff and others have submitted emails expressing their intent to continue with the theme park for a number of years. The development agreement has absolutely nothing in it that would preclude them from turning it entirely into warehousing in June of next year.
Gotcha.
Other than that, right. And then they've got their contractual relationship.
Yeah. I mean, whatever, whatever they'd have to do to buy out their contracts or whatever, that's between them and the theme park operator. Like, that's not our side of the curtain, right? On our side of the curtain is what's in the development agreement, and the understanding that you guys should have is that there's nothing in there that, that gives the city a guarantee that what the property owner, you know, expressed in his email, we could rely on. That's, that's just, that's a, that's a good intent, right?
Yeah, no, I, I understand we can't, but since they're here, I wonder if they're willing to let us know if that's, you know, the consent or the, yes, I'd appreciate.
Oh, thanks, Jeff.
So just recently, as, as soon as last week, we were, we go see Kiran, who's head of Premier Parks. Every year in New York, we went in September to talk about the lease, and we went over the fine points of it. When he bought my park back 24 years ago, we were in New York, and we did it on a piece of paper, and he, he closed it 30, 30, or 90 days later. But we're at a deal, I think, that we're going to be putting in paper, but this is what's kind of going on, is, is he goes, you want to do, I want 30 years, good enough for you? He goes, well, maybe it's more, you know? I said, okay, fine, put it down on paper, and, and, and why would I want to put a warehouse in when I, when I could have put, if Kiran can go 30 years, the land's going to be worth even that more, I don't have to sell it. I don't want to sell it. I know, even, even if it's a warehouse, I could, I want to lease it. And if I lease it, I can say, okay, trucks are staying on Milton Road, you're not going anywhere. That's part of the lease. And, oh, by the way, we want a wall up around the whole park with, with a dirt berm. That's lease. But Kiran and I are, he's, he's, I told him that he's got at least 20 million into it, and he says, Jeff, I'm looking at 30 or 40. I mean, that's the way our negotiations are going. So, and Jody, am I wrong?
Yep.
Yep. So we had, I saw him Monday and Wednesday, last, just last week.
Gotcha. So pretty much warehouses, like, don't limit me on my land in the future just in case?
Yeah. Yeah. Because if he defaults, that, think of it, I know staff could tell me, if I have a five, five-acre hotel and 25% warehouse and some office, and I think I can put retail on there, you're going to have to exit off, it'd be like a mall, and it'd be worse, worse for traffic. And the traffic might even be better, especially if I keep them off behind the homeowners. And I, I wrote the homeowners association, I gave every, there's two homeowners associations back there, I give everyone my, my personal office number so I can explain it. I didn't get one phone call. Not one. But two of the letters came from the condos on the other side, and, and I usually talk to them, and I didn't. So that's my bad, that's on me.
Gotcha. I just appreciate you actually being here to answer these questions because I know that's the, the main issue we've had in conversation is warehouse. So thank you for the time.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Council President.
So Keith, if they were to do anything like a warehouse, wouldn't it have to go through a SEPA determination?
So, yes. So the, the SEPA determination would make sure that whatever environmental impacts associated with that potential project were mitigated. So that, that includes noise, that includes potentially aesthetics, that includes traffic.
And that's quite a long process, isn't it?
Well, we try to be efficient, but it, it is, it, it would take them, if they came in tomorrow with a land use application for a warehouse, it would take us probably, you know, close to a year to get that permitted.
Yeah. And doesn't that go through a hearing examiner also?
It would not go through a hearing examiner. It would be an administrative decision, so it would be up to my staff for, to evaluate.
So it's not like a given thing, it's just like an option if needed. But still, they have to go through a lot of hoops.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. My concern is with the concomitant agreement that Weyerhauser had, somehow we ended up with warehouses on that property. And I don't want to see that on this property because I want to see the park continue. I'd love to see a hotel there, I think that'd be awesome, but I don't want to see warehouses there. I don't think that would be good for that area or for that community. And as, if it's in the concomitant agreement, it's possible. And that's what my, my point, my sticking point is with this, because it's, once in the concomitant agreement, it's very possible that it could happen, even with the best intentions of Jeff Stock. And I trust him, I think he's a great businessman, and he's done great things for this city. I just don't like the word warehouse, and it concerns me a lot. I, I just have grave concerns with that.
If I might, Mayor, just briefly, to be very clear, yes, there would be considerable permitting review, as Council President referenced, with respect to any warehouse proposal that would come in, but there's unlikely to be anything in that permit review which would allow the city to deny the permit.
All right. Councilmember Dovey?
Can I move the question?
Yes. Does that require a second?
Yes.
Is there a second to move the question?
Second.
Okay. There's been a motion, a second to move the question. And there's been a motion and a second, a discussion, a motion to move plus a second. All those in favor?
The question.
Do we need two votes or just one?
To move the question.
I believe just a second is sufficient.
Okay. So now, this is, this is for approval or, or decline. For, it's on the main matter. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Jennifer?
Councilmember Assefa Dawson?
Aye.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Aye.
Councilmember Tran?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember Dovey?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Honda?
Nay.
Council President Kochmar?
Aye.
The motion passes six to one.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you for your patience tonight. It's been a long, long process tonight, so thank you. All right. Okay. Let's move on to ordinance's second reading and enactment. Item D, Council Bill 866, Ordinance 2023 to 24, Biennial Budget Midyear Adjustment. Would the deputy city clerk please read the ordinance title?
An Ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, Relating to Amending the 2023-2024 Biennial Budget.
All right. Councilmember Tran.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. Item E, Council Bill 867, Ordinance 2024 Property Tax Levy. Would the deputy city clerk please read the ordinance title?
An Ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, Relating to Fixing the Property Tax Amount for the Year 2024.
Councilmember Tran.
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Second.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Jennifer?
Councilmember Assefa Dawson?
Aye.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Nay.
Councilmember Tran?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember Dovey?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Honda?
Aye.
Council President Kochmar?
Aye.
The motion passes six to one.
All right. Item F, Council Bill 867, excuse me, 865, Ordinance, Ordinance Relating to a Concomitant Zoning Agreement Amendment of the Winco Foods' Concomitant Zoning Agreement, to Remove the Applicability of the Concomitant Zoning Agreement to the Winco Foods' Property. All right. Councilmember Dovey?
I move approval of the proposed ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Matter passed unanimously. Counsel reports. Councilmember Dovey.
I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Here, here. Councilmember Walsh?
I also wish everyone a, a happy Thanksgiving, and also just to let you know that, I've given this to a couple of you, I will be singing at a nativity concert and on December 10th up in, in Bellevue, and all of you are invited to attend, whoever would want, and it's accompanied with a wonderful nativity display program. It's a great way to start the Christmas, and love you to be there. I'll have these for you. And other than that, I'm ready to go home.
Here, here. Counsel, is, is that a motion? Just kidding. Do I hear a second? All right. Councilmember Tran?
I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember McDaniel?
I'll vote with those guys. Happy Thanksgiving and have a good night.
Here, here. Councilmember Assefa Dawson?
Same here. Happy Thanksgiving. I have nothing to report on, and it was great to join you all, be it late, and thank you for accommodating.
Thank you, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor.
Welcome home, Councilmember Assefa Dawson, and I hope everyone has a safe Thanksgiving. And if you see someone who is lonely and doesn't have anyone around, invite them over.
Here, here. Well said, Councilmember. Council President.
So, so Councilmember McDaniel tells me I am in the demographic that belongs on Facebook, which is true. So a very exciting thing happened over the weekend when my granddaughter, who's tall, gorgeous, athletic, things I never was, her soccer team made it to the state championship. It isn't state champion. So there's a picture of her holding this trophy, huge, and I, it went on Instagram, and I told my daughter, I said, I'm not on Instagram. So then I had to figure out how to get on Instagram. Yeah. What I have to say to all of you is, all of you who have said that they want to follow me, including my family, I'm not on Instagram. I don't post, but anyway. You congratulate my granddaughter, Dara. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and congratulations to your granddaughter at Roosevelt High School, right?
Roosevelt.
Great job, counsel, a great job this evening. Staff, thank you so much. Members of the public who are still with us and, and watching online, thank you very much. We are adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving. Have a safe and happy.
Good night.